You stuck by the train?
No.
Oh, we thought maybe you did. They said they heard a train. I was like, maybe she stopped.
Earlier this week. No, this is my own.
You guys are live. Don't they say anything with the world as well?
Are you good? Good? All right. I guess uh president for a little bit here. So we will uh call to order the January or sorry, December eighteen twenty twenty four uh school board, I guess, where session to introduce some architect first.
Joan Goodrich.
Yeah.
Jenny Jordan.
Yes.
Josh McFlair.
Yes.
My friend and Christie Ballant, yes. Okay.
So I have an permission to approve the agenda.
I so both.
Second.
Hey Jenny?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Um Christie, yes. Jody, yes.
We will uh move right on. I guess everybody's kind of aware. Well, a couple of months ago, we had an ICAT um assessment of our facilities and now we're at the stage to uh uh kind of get an architect onboard and we have uh four different uh architect firms tonight. And the first one we're going to hear from is SVPA. Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, thanks for having us. I'm Sarah Gorman with SVPA Architects and one of the core partners in the firm. Um she'll get into my role later on a little bit, but more about SVPA, but Damian.
I'm Damian Skol and I'm a senior architect with SVPA. I've been with the company about five years. Um and then involved in various master plan projects with various.
So Damian and I are representing our entire team. Um Vidas Berry, who's the president of SVPA, could not make it tonight. He um came down with COVID and so he decided to spare us all that going up to the holidays. And so he will be very much involved in the project and he'll actually be leading the effort from the SVPA team, but is not able to join us tonight. Um and then we also have Danielle Williams, who's one of our interior designers, who will also be um on the team as well. My role as part of this team will really be to help with the programming, kind of the upfront planning piece of it, and then to stay safe route and kind of be supportive to Vidas and the rest of the team as it goes forward. Um we also partnered with IMEG Engineering, who's our mechanical electrical plumbing engineer, as well as they bring a safety and security component as well. So they will be actively involved as we go through the master planning process as well, but figured we might as well just bring the SVPA team to you tonight.
Sarah, thanks. They want to come over. IMEG also helped us with the assessment, so they know buildings that could. Sorry.
Yeah, no, appreciate that. Um often a little time talking about SVP architects. I know we went through probably a more thorough thing in our um RFP response, but SVP architects is based in West Des Moines, Iowa, and all of that. Then we're coming up on our seventy second year this coming year. So um always doing architecture and interior design. We feel it's best for our projects to um partner with consultants. So we only do architecture and interior design and we bring on civil mechanical electrical plumbing, which is why we turned to IMEG. We thought they were given their history of doing the assessment. Um that they were the best team for for your particular project. Um we're what's considered probably a small to midsize firm in the market. Um we have a staff of twenty four. Um he wrote twenty four now, uh four principals and then um one office just located in the West Des Moines area. I think some of the things that we're the given size that we are, we like to consider ourselves more of a family environment. So if you call in and have a question on a project, more than one person really knows about it because we're all hearing that and really involved throughout. So we can pitch in and help each other. It also helps us to be uh pretty diversified. Damian, we're on a lot of different project types. We're not just kind of pigeonholed into various studios and things like that. So I think our team really enjoys having that variety. Um some of the core things about SVPA is because we're small, you're having two partners from the firm involved in your project and then the other two involved are stakeholders in the company as well. So we're all part owners in this. You can have a vested interest in making sure that your project goes right. This is not just uh you won't just see me at the interview or Vidas could be here. You wouldn't just see him at the interview. He's we stay actively involved our way here. So we think it's important that our leaders are um more day to day contacted and involved through um through it from the master planning phase up to any other projects that might happen. So we want this to be an opportunity to build a relationship with you and then wanna and be your partner for the next few years. The other thing we say is ego is not a design element. We come in with kind of a an approach that this is your project. This is not going to be our project. So we're not trying to do something for SVPA. We're trying to do something for Atlantic. And I think that really rings true. Architects have a uh kind of a uh persona that they're egotistical or that they're trying to build things for the sake of building things. And we tell our people all the time, we're building it to what what the client needs. And so I think that that really brings true from the top to the bottom. We listen and ask first. So especially that's really critical in this master planning phase because not only do we want to listen to you, we want to listen to the state person in the community. Which is so important when you're trying to go for bond or trying to gain that community support. We'll talk a little bit more about that community engagement. But I think that's really important that our team um has that mindset to listen to you. And then we think the process should be fun. We don't think that this should be something that you muddle through or have to get through to to get to the bond. This is painful. We know that your jobs are not to design projects every day. And so we want to bring you the expertise, but also make it so that decisions are easy for you to understand and communicate and try and just enjoy the process along the way. We're going to spend a little time. I know we have a short night tonight, so I would just say if you have questions along the way, feel free to and ask them as we go through. We will save a little spot for for questions in the end. But we're going to highlight just a couple of projects that we also illustrated. There's more in the RFP response. But we wanted to focus a little bit on our master plan process with a similar project and then get into some of the priorities that we've heard and kind of share some some of those um similar projects that might relate to more what you're looking for.
I'm gonna jump over here so I can see everyone. So like Sarah was saying, I just kind of wanted to talk through some of the current uh projects that we're working on in terms of master planning. So Mount Pleasant Community School Districts, we've been working with them since about twenty twenty one when we did a facilities assessment of their nine nine buildings. Um so we've been working with them for about four or five years. Uh the master planning process, it kind of switched gears maybe uh last year, a year and a half ago, when they acquired the Iowa Westland campus in town there when they closed down. So we we did some previous master planning work for them without having this campus. So we kind of had to switch gears towards this campus. Um and with the thought of uh process where it's at now, we we're still working on it. So with about twenty to twenty two stakeholders uh with Mount Pleasant between the school board, community members, and then elementary principals, teachers, so trying to get all that feedback so we can master plan this. So with this project, with this campus, looking to do a uh uh two five building attached to one of the existing college buildings on the bottom, which was their student union and their uh gymnasium. So it's quite a big cafeteria kitchen. Kind of a lot of amenities that they don't have to pay to rebuild. So more or less an addition of classrooms to get a two five school there. Uh currently, they have four elementary schools that they're that they're running. One's out of town, but you know, try to consolidate that. Uh so looking at the campus, you know, some of the issues that uh we run into and it's maybe a little sim- similar, you kind of have a campus feel with your middle school and Schuler in Washington. Um you know, especially for this one, going from a college campus to an elementary school and security. So looking at the perimeter, you know, how do you, where do you put the playground? You know, where's the traffic flow? Because there's really none through the campus right now. So those are kind of some of the issues. So in terms of, you know, continuous adaptation, you know, it's still a moving process. We're still moving the building around and trying to figure out what the best solution is for them and also to stick with uh their budget, what they have. So we've worked with the construction manager on this and a lot of our master planning processes, we've worked with the construction manager through the assessment phase and through the master planning phase. So very conscious about not showing something that's going to, you know, that they can't afford. So there's a lot of push and pull. Uh because you know, they have schools. I mean, there's a lot of of needs and then there's a lot of belongs. Trying to you know, try to work through that and you know, kind of the give and take of of doing that because obviously working on a budget. And we need to stick to that to get the best outcome. So so like I said, previous master plan with Mount Pleasant, this was before they got the Iowa Westland, kind of just showing some of the uh the process deliverables that we used during that process. And they have quite a big site where their high school is and they have a lot of space out there. So our task here was to kind of look at moving their existing athletic facilities in town, which they shared with the college. Kind of moving that to the high school campus so that you have better proximity for the students, for the coaches, you know, to the locker rooms, the weight room. Um you know, just the other amenities that you would need. And also on this campus, all it's hard to read, but kind of all these colored dots is also looking at you know, new auditorium, uh a CTE room and then an A and an A instruction uh addition to it. And then also they their lease runs out on their admin space. So like look at that, adding their kind of standalone central admin building. So this was just one iteration. We did multiple iterations at all the sites, but that's again, just kind of the the back and forth uh between our our meetings and what they need and where we need to fit that within their community.
I think something too on this one was the elementary schools were kind of a vintage of some of your elementary spaces. And so having those hard conversations about like, is it worth fixing this component? Is it worth taking something down or taking this building offline? Trying to then not only get the board um to be able to understand what's what's happening and then make the right decisions, but then also living in the community too, because a lot of community interest happens in those kinds of conversations. So Mount Pleasant has kind of gone through some of that, that you might also be facing as you're starting to look at some aging buildings and and how possibly it might be to fix them or what if you need to consider alternatives of or portions of demolition or or things like that. We like to come with all things on the table. So then you can shoot them down and say, no, that's not an option. Our, you know, our community won't rally behind that. We want to make sure that that we're presenting those things to you. Washington Schools has been, uh we've been working with them for the last fifteen years. Um for when we were hired on with this school district, they had like failed the last bond. So they were going through a series of failed bond after failed bond. And they needed to do some work to their high school. Their high school was in one of their older buildings. There was some consensus to try and maybe relocate them to the current middle school. Um but really, I think the story that we want to tell with this one was how we approached the community. We came in knowing that this was a really, you know, people were divided on what to do. They knew things needed to happen, but there wasn't a lot of consensus to what it would be. And we started with a lot of um community meetings. So we gathered, we invited people, but then we also opened up to everybody. And we had a charrette at one session where we had the master plan of the high school and literally had people move things around to see it on a master plan. And what that did was although we may not have used those types of things in um the final design, it gave people a voice. So we knew what the hot topics were because they kept coming up as we were, we were working through things. But it also helped us to to have a sense of, okay, this is important. And we need to make sure that if we're ever going to pass a bond in this community, this needs to be something that that is part of it. And so it was a really good um exercise for us and this school district. And since then, they've had, they've passed the last three bonds. So we've been working with them. Damian will get into to the other projects, but I think that that's a really compelling um story about how you can engage your community and really gain that consensus. You may already have that, but um if you ever have troublesome issues, just really kind of rallying and and having those community meetings has been really helpful for for some of our school districts.
Yeah, well, yeah. So on this one, again, like Sarah was saying, they had a few options for the the high school. They could renovate their existing one. They could build a totally new high school. Or they could renovate their existing high school, which is what we ended up doing is kind of this uh rendering to showing and and currently this is under construction in uh the nineteen sixties. Existing building here is currently under construction. But we we ended up uh to get the most bang for their buck. Well, this was like the most viable solution because they well, they already had quite a bit of amenities in the existing high school. So we just, in this scenario, we you know, we added a two story high school addition, mostly classrooms, a new like commercial FCS lab in there. Um and then it's hidden under here, but we did add like uh addition for the the middle school. So when they close their hundred year old middle school building, they're going to move the those kids back. Um so again, a way like we were saying, like, does it make sense to tear it down or is to redo it? So uh few years ago, did an ESSER project, so they upgraded all the mechanical systems in this wing and then reset it within the last year, started renovating basically that whole entire wing. So all new finishes and mechanical units. And then also in this case, you know, new entry, a new secure entry here for the middle school. The high school already has one on the other side, but as we'll kind of see in a later slide, is some of the secure entry things that I know that was uh reading through the assessment, you know, a few schools that were lacking the secure entry.
So the bond support that we provided for Washington, we've had, this is just kind of a sampling of a lot of the school districts that we've helped um them support. Vidas is somebody that understands bonds and the community aspect of that campaign through and through. So I'm not going to ever do it justice how he can um really talk through that process, but he has been instrumental in a lot of these school projects and has a lot of um a strategy that you can help build through the process, working with your user groups and your your stakeholders to make sure that you have successful bond, that you have that community engagement and input into that as well.
So another school district we've done some work with is uh Kia Cut. So we kind of wanted to show this slide just from a uh kind of a ingenuity or, you know, bringing back something that was there before. So this four story uh piece of their high school, you know, in the nineteen fifties looked like that, the seventies. Probably with energy, they infilled a lot of the windows. Um so that's what it looked like. And then within the last ten years, we came back with, you know, with modern technology, uh energy efficient, you know, curtain wall system and all a completely new like geo- geothermal for for the school there. Um you know, as a way to kind of show some of our processes as DPA, um this was before my time at SDPA, but Vidas and Sarah, you know, all worked on it, but uh just to show what's kind of what's possible. Uh
It kind of relates like your Schuler building has some of you know and how they have infilled like the skyline, you know, I wonder if at one point it was all glass and just so ways to rethink, you know, that vintage style building that you have. But also I think you've done a really nice job. We were able to tour your your middle school and seeing that restoration that was done. So I think your community probably appreciates that and just, you know, having that vision to um be able to repurpose and and bring those buildings back.
So through that other Kia Cut project, it kind of led us into uh a new project with them. They needed a secure entry at the high school. So this is kind of the Kia Cut plan here. This used to be a choir room, band room. And their entry was right here and their offices were right here. So they had really no connection to the main entry. So in this scenario, just to show you know, the feasibility of putting it within within the like the existing footprint of the building. So this was actually quite a project because it had concrete risers for wire in there that we had to tear out. Um but they needed a new secure entry. Uh they have an S R O officer that sits right here with the window. So we got good visibility to the entry. And then other than just the kind of the space of that vestibule, there's also built in a lot of, you know, uh uh door hardware control. Um this whole school has a panic button, so they can hit a button and it locks all the exterior doors down. Any of that? Um which Washington doesn't have, but you know, this is one thing that Kia Cut has now. Uh but just from a, you know, there's windows, so there's good vis- visibility through there. All visitors come through that vestibule. They have to get, you know, patched into the office. So basically everyone needs to come through the office that comes through the uh uh into the school, which is pretty similar to all schools that we've done. Like Washington is similar. It's a smaller deal, but there's a secure vestibule and everyone's kind of pushed through the into the main office if they're let in. Um it's hard to see, but this also has good, you know, there's good visibility. There's there's windows on the front that face kind of the main drive uh and parking in the out front. Uh so this scenario, there's a, it was a included in the addition, just a small addition. The school wall was kind of right right there. So we bumped it out a little bit um and included a secure entry in there. Which I think and also that I may uh is it Ryan with IMA has quite a bit of security background reading, you know, kind of through his background there. Um which would be very beneficial in terms of when it comes to actually, you know, doing a secure entry and how that functions and and what you want that to be. And it also proves other than just uh secure entries, also the voice enunciation or, you know, the paging system in the school. Um like I said, door security um and also cameras. So kind of a multi level of security.
So I think at your various schools, you probably have different approaches. We might have to add an addition like at the high school where it comes right into where the auditory entrance is. It's going to be hard to do a secure entry at that location where you might consider an addition that might be able to bring people into that secure entry. Where some of the other locations, we might be able to repurpose an adjacent space um to utilize for that secure entry. So I think we we kind of explore all the actions and I think it's really interesting, you know, that we look at it from one perspective, but it's really nice to have Ryan on the IMA team because he looks at it in entirely different perspective. Starting on the perimeter and coming in. And so having that expertise, um I think would be really beneficial to these study teachers. So the last piece that we just wanted to, we know that there's some talk of maybe um indoor athletic support spaces as well. So um that seems to be a hot topic in a lot of districts. Um we're working on a variety of field houses right now. Um so we are just completing an Iowa City um master plan for two of the high schools in Iowa City School District. Both of them are considering a field house, which is a fifty yard turf with um other batting cages, indoor um practice space. Um we just completed Van Buren is down in the corner on a much smaller scale, but an indoor turf type space. Um so some of those things are are becoming things that the community might rally behind, or you might hear um some of those, you know, people really for that. And so um we have that expertise and just kind of we're starting to see that more and more and be integrated in um to benefit all the fan and and some of those will also it's on those indoor um field spaces. So it's it's become something that has been really prevalent in a lot of our recent schools.
That's up.
Okay. Well, then I might jump to questions before I finish with, because they only have seven. It was a short one. I felt like I talked too fast, so.
Starting.
Oh. Okay.
You're okay.
Then I didn't even talk so fast. I'm sorry. Hopefully you picked up most of my words.
So one of the questions that was suggested on here was to sort of ask us what you see the biggest challenge um for our project as being. And I guess I would maybe piggyback on that is, you know, what would be the biggest challenge with our project as you see it? As well as what you're most excited about with the potential for.
Well, what I might see as a challenge, but I'm also excited about the same thing is the Washington Elementary. We toured that one. Um when you enter that building, you have the really low ceilings. It kind of has that, you know, it it's going to be harder to update that facility and make it feel like a vibrant learning center. So I think one of the challenges that will have is what investment do you want to make into that piece of it? I know you have a beautiful addition that has been done to it. Um so that will be something that's going to be an interesting challenge as we start. How do we expand? How do we give you the room that you need and also make it be really functional within the dollars that you want to invest into that? Um but I think it's it's one of the more exciting projects. You guys, you have a beautiful middle school. And so I feel like our our work there will be probably a little more limited. Schuler kind of excites me, you know, as we were looking through those those key things. I think that there could be some minor restoration that happens there. But Washington felt like maybe one of the the bigger needs from a a renovation type standpoint. Um I think the high school and, you know, just understanding all that you want to bring to this campus. We heard, you know, you might bring some alternative high school here. The expansion of some of your um tech programs and things like that and how we do that. So we still set you up for future growth. That's the the nice thing with the master plan is not only thinking of what the next project is, but the next one and the next one after that in this phase. So that we don't bottleneck you into something that then, you know, as this program expands or that program expands um might limit you. So I would say Washington is probably the one that excites me the most.
And and now I'll follow up on that because you mentioned, I think it was Washington. I think you heard, I've heard you say they have had three bond issues. Is that right? So is that, does that mean that they have been successfully planning through a master plan and phasing it rather than just, or do they, I mean, do most? How 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 are most schools handling that? Do they do one big bond issue to cover everything? Or are they sequencing projects?
For um Washington School District, it was a little, so some of it was planned out uh when we first started. So we knew that there would be an auditorium as part of a future program. But one of the bonds was for an early ed center that they added to an elementary. That wasn't on our radar in two thousand and ten. It just wasn't as much of a hot topic. And I don't think there was as much of a a shortage of childcare in that timeframe. Um but that became a real need and they saw it as a real opportunity to bring kids to the school at an early age and keep them in the school district. So introducing those families. So that one was probably not part of our radar, but adding it to the elementary school has really significantly helped them. So it's an infant through pre K program. That's attached to the elementary school that was passed in a bond. I think that had a lot of interest in the bond because people want to support having childcare in the town where they where they live and having it be close to where maybe other students may be.
Yeah, I think their their most recent bond, like the high school project. We did, we did the assessment and we did some master planning. You know, it was really focused on the middle school and high school because they they had an aging middle school building. Um so it wasn't really like campus wide, but I mean, it took it took into account a big population of their district. So the last bond that was passed for for that, like twenty five or twenty eight million was all that money was basically for the high school project because there's some two phases. So
I I ask that because there's a tendency to, oh, we need this and oh, we need this. It just, you know, kind of questioned whether it's better in terms of community's support to put everything into one big project. Or whether that becomes too difficult to pass because people say wait a minute, wait a minute, this is overwhelming and sometimes chunking things.
If you can stay neutral um in your tax, I mean, that's always the going to be the best.
In your level.
Yes. Yeah. So if we can keep our numbers or whatever we're going to tackle um to stay within that that frame of it, I think that would be really beneficial. We've seen a lot of success with that.
Sure.
Um you know, no increase to your taxes, they'll just stay the same. And you get all these benefits of the programs.
And you keep it small enough that you can pay it off in a reasonable time later. Yeah.
Right. That's what we're doing at at Pekin is trying to keep it neutral through through that with this, that we're master planning with them too. But I mean, their whole school district is kind of one building from kindergarten to twelfth grade, but uh the next bond is trying, you know, is taking that into account to try to keep that tax at the at the same amount. So it's a lot of can push and pull, like what can we what can we just do on a, you know, another bucket of money versus putting it into the master plan funding so we can sell that that bond better. So.
Got two questions. So uh school districts, your primary type of clients?
I would say about, we have probably fifty percent private, fifty percent public market. And of our public sector work, school districts K through twelve makes up probably seventy five, eighty percent of it. So and it varies. Um certain years, like when we were in two thousand and eighteen, we were doing corporate headquarters left and right. Um and then in twenty twenty, we stopped doing corporate headquarters and a lot of our, like, it just seemed like a lot of schools were getting extra funds. We're getting all of these funding and so so it kind of ramps up, but it is probably seventy five percent of what Vidas is um area of expertise in. So he deals with school districts all of his team.
Second question, um in school design educationally in classrooms. Um what have you found that would accommodate today's classroom needs and future classroom needs? Are they the same? Do they look the same? What's the space going to look like in ten years, twenty years from now?
I think the biggest thing that we have tried to incorporate is the ability to be flexible because the classroom. The classroom itself, everything that's going on in it is continuing to adapt and change. So how do, how teachers are teaching? It has been changing. And so having as much flexibility as we can build into that classroom, when we get to the elementary. Um it might have a little bit less, but when we start seeing in the the high school platforms. Um trying to build flexibility into the school where something could be repurposed down the road. Or a different program that might suit the high school. We're seeing, you know, the same. You know, family and consumer science or lab spaces are being transformed so that they're not just used for. This particular lab at this point in time because you wanna have, make as much use of your space as possible. And so we're trying to think creatively of how can these spaces not have so much built into them that they're locked into that? And that teaching style for the next twenty years. How can we think of this style and this style and this style? And create the setup so it can adapt as your program, as your curriculum and all of those things adapt to. That's probably been the the biggest thing. We also have seen, especially in the high school. Really driving community spaces. So it's not just the cafeteria anymore, but it could be a pocket outside of a group of classrooms. Where students can gather, where they feel like they can go talk to a teacher, you know, within a close area. So really kind of creating these. Or pocket or centralized, smaller areas that allows students to have community that's not just in giant cafeteria type spaces. So.
Yeah, we've got like tea, like. Uh team rooms or like small conference rooms, like breakout rooms for, cause there's a lot of team, like team project type things where they need to meet outside the classroom. But it's almost more of a somewhat of a collegiate feel where they're creating smaller spaces throughout. So you don't just, you know, it's not just a a double loaded board over. Yeah, and it really gets, I mean, with the flexibility, it really gets into the construction of the. Of the building as well. Um if you wanna stay flexible or or you know, in the future, if you gotta grow, cause. Then schools where it's all cement block. It's a little harder to kind of manipulate rooms where you can get a mixture of cement block and drywall, you know, so it's a little more flexible in the future. Where it's not gonna be a maybe a bigger task or as much money to kind of reconfigure space as you see fit, you know, as new. Even new programs come online, then you gotta create, you know, you need new space for that program, uh where you can kind of move things around and create that, so.
There are questions?
Did we ever get to a bond referendum? You said Vitus would be involved probably the most of anybody on staff. Are, is is Vitus, is he gonna be the person that leads a lot of the public forums, discussions? What what's your part that you've done in the process?
Yeah, so we have led um community meetings. Um we kind of rely on you to tell us how you think the community will respond the best. Some communities, it's, we're happy to be part of that. Others have found that maybe it needs to be led by you all because on the outside. Influence isn't received as well. So we like to have those conversations with some of your key stakeholders. There, there's usually a group that we try and assemble that involves members of the community, members of the school, members of the board, like trying to get. And having them give us insight as to how much support you want from us. Um so it's kind of gone both ways for whatever school districts we're in. But we kind of have a a mapped out process that we can walk you through of here's when we think you need to start. Here's the first stage of, you know, just kind of rolling it out, building your champions in the community that can help kind of sell this. Um hearing what the opposition is and then coming right away with ways that you can talk through that opposition and why. Um maybe it's not still founded or something like that. So. Yeah, there's a process in place that we help guide you through for that. And we'll all be supporting the effort, but he's just, he has expertise with almost all of these split districts. That really has a wealth of knowledge of what he has seen through his thirty-year career as a teacher that. She's really helpful.
Um tell me a little bit about, do you, does your firm typically work with the construction manager or do, I mean, we've. We've done projects both ways where it's been the superintendent or whether it's been a dedicated. Um project manager per se, I don't know that we really work with a construction management firm, so.
We work with construction managers a lot. Um I find in the master planning process, it is incredibly helpful because. They're gonna give an insight to constructibility, to phasing, to the budget. That although we can do that on projects where we're, we're just doing it ourselves, um it's, their. Their information is really just invaluable for our team. So you know, ahead of time, hey, this is. This is likely gonna be a challenge because of constructibility issues or something like that. So um. It's my preferred method, but I, we handle it in all different ways. We have split districts that don't ever use it. I would say schools never use a construction manager, so. Um and those projects have also been very successful.
Were you involved with the Southeast?
No.
Okay.
We did Northwest and North Central. Remember the middle schools?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we did Northwest and North Central. Um Iowa City uses a pool, so, and then we did Liberty High School. Um and then we're working on their tech, their center of innovation right now too.
In terms of your um. Past experience or work utilizing, I mean, part of our need is to really evaluate how our current spaces are being utilized. And to see, you know, can the best usage, if we are, if we have enough square footage in those spaces for the way that we're using it or how. Um and some of that may even be, uh we've, we've had the same alignment. Pretty much for grades and use of our buildings, but they could modify it a little bit of the preschool, doing some different things. So that. Can you speak to that a little bit or?
Yeah, um so like for Bondurant schools, they're, we've been helping them for many years as well. They're just going through a realignment where they're taking. They're doing a K one building. So that came out of conversations and some of those that input. So. Those are bigger shifts. Iowa City Schools transitioned from all junior highs to middle schools and they had to do it in all the buildings at the same time. So let me provide you the the information. Now, when it comes to the actual academic side of things, you know, you guys are definitely the experts on that. From a facility side, we can talk through, hey, adding this program or combining this age group. Will present you with this challenge and this challenge, but this might be the opportunity there. So we do provide that feedback in the master plan.
Yeah, we're doing that with Mount Pleasant, just in terms of size of classrooms. I get into more of it. Some are smaller, so like showing what the recommended sizes are. That which kind of led to the additions at the Iowa Westland Campus to get the the right sized classrooms of that. Potentially renovate things. I see an elementary school, like reconfigured their classrooms in there to get. Six kindergarten classrooms versus eight, you know, first grade classrooms. So it's all kind of part of that, using kind of today's kind of. Standards for the rate, you know, square footage for students. Yep, so we do have to help on that, so.
Okay, I just have one, the just closing thoughts on S U K. I think what we bring to the table is a fresh perspective. We have not worked with your school districts before, but we really enjoy that opportunity. I think when Vitus and I were touring all of your buildings, it was really exciting to see some. And a lot of those buildings, we were reminded of other districts that we've worked on and just kind of how you can transform um some of those spaces. So we like to think that that fresh perspective might rejuvenate kind of um some of your thought processes. Um the other thing is the stability and longevity of this team. So Damian is just celebrating six, five years with us. But Danielle, Vitus and I have all been at the firm for almost twenty, twenty years each of us. Um and. Like for the Washington project in example, like we were with them back in two thousand nine and we're still the people that show up to those meetings. Vitus still goes to all those meetings. I still know the people at Washington. So. You're, be, because we're small enough and we think that we, you know, our team stays here and we're committed to your project, not only for the master plan and the next project. But we wanna be, have the same team that's on your project ten years from now, um working with you. We're responsive and flexible. I think we, given the size of us, we can be pretty nimble and I think I mentioned this at the beginning, but this is not gonna be an S V P A project. This is gonna be an Atlantic Schools project. So with those ideas, we're not gonna dictate what your design is. We want it to be with you all. Feel comfortable in what you think your community needs for this area. And then like I said, we hope you enjoy the process. I think this should be fun. Um we hope to do things on time and on budget, which always makes things more fun. Uh but at the same time, like this shouldn't be the burden that you carry. You have a lot of other issues as school board members to tackle. And the facilities part of it should be something where your experts um can present you with the information so that you feel comfortable and this is not a headache for you. So. Thank you for the time. Sorry. Been a long night, I'm gonna start you off.
Yeah, and thanks for dealing with our.
S V P A, smaller firm, does a lot of work in Eastern Iowa, West Des Moines. Uh next is Alley Pointer, they're out of Omaha and Red Oak. Well, you're there, I'm gonna get out of there.
So shoes, there is like notes on the basket you want to. We also brought a little pack of sugar. I think anybody sitting here a little while. So that's very good. That's very good. Yeah, you bet. Thank you for having us in.
I'll give you guys a five minute warning. I will say it out loud this time. I didn't say it last time, so I'll say five minutes, then what we all know is that we're at the last, but toward the end, so. You're able to do however you wanna approach, but we're, we're all gonna listen, let you guys go.
We're also gonna set the timer here, so if you see me looking at my phone, I'm not texting my kids. We're also trying to keep, keep track of time.
If you're good for seven, that. Sounds good. Boy, you're ready here? We're excited to be here. We're gonna go through some individual. Introductions, but I mean, before we start, we wanna say first off, um there's an energy that comes with being in a school. And normally it's not banned.
Yeah.
Uh it ties before interviews, we were joking, that's kind of what it feels like in our heads. So. We're gonna, yeah, I'll play different music and stumble through a few things, but that's just the nerves and anxiety that come with. Number one, we do this because we love schools, we love kids. And we usually start with sort of a notion of gratitude and it's usually in regard to you. As school board members, administrators, for kind of being generous with your time first. And second, know that we try and bring that through in the work we do. Sometimes in the middle of a construction project or design project that gets set aside, we have to go back to that sort of idea that we're doing this because we have a passion for kids. But I hope that comes through tonight. Um I'm batting a little bit of a sore throat, I'm on the tail end of it, but that's what's in my mouth right now. And also, if I say anything in error, know that it's the fog of that. It wasn't that I'm missing the point. Uh Jay Pollen, I'm one of the partners at Alley Pointer and I'll explain my role as we get into this a little bit. I hope it all becomes obvious, but. Excited to be here, so Derek.
Yeah, I'm Derek O'Neill. Uh I'm also a partner at Alley Pointer. That's my twentieth year there. I've run pretty much the Iowa practice side, side of things out of our Red Oak office. Um it would not be at all unusual for you to, if you're in Red Oak at the school, see me uh flipping burgers at the concession stand for an event. Uh I also uh call volleyball games on the radio for K C S I. Uh so those are some of the things that. And I do outside of the the architecture piece. This project, you'd see me uh regularly um from. Start to finish, particularly in the whole community engagement, master planning piece, um right up in the the front end here.
Hi everyone, I'm Mindy Philippi, um project manager. I'm really excited about um all of the great things you guys have in your community. I'm currently working at Vision Atlantic. Um and we're really excited. Um that project is kind of wrapping up. I know there's like a whole project going with Vision Atlantic right now. There's three of them. Two of them are what, ones that we're working on, the Y M C A and the childcare facility. We're wrapping those up in in January. So um. I'm really excited about this opportunity to potentially stay in your community and be in front of you guys even longer. Um it's been fun getting to know your community. And so um yeah, timing is perfect for us to kind of roll right into this and. My choose. So um as project manager, um same as Derek noted, um you'll see me the whole process as well. Um my responsibility as project manager is making sure that we're sticking with the schedule, the budget. And there's an open line of communication. So with the communication piece being so critical, um you could always reach out to anybody on our team. We're always ready for you. But um I could certainly be the first direct line of communicate, communication to the team and and to you guys.
Evening, everybody. I am Chandler Green. Um, at Alley Pointer, I'm an interior designer, uh, which encompasses, encompasses more than just figuring paints and your furniture and things like that. For instance. Um, it boils down to the planning, really being in your spaces and understanding how they're gonna work, function, and how that looks in the bigger picture. So really looking forward to this opportunity. Um, gonna start at the ground up with you guys to see where this wants to go. Um, personally, outside of APMA, um, I have two kiddos. I love being involved in the community. I like really nerd out about community meetings and like really getting to know you all and um, your community members, your students, your kiddos. Uh, anything like that. I sit on a um board of one of the, my high school, um, and so really getting into not just the building. And how their experience coming in um is what that looks like in the building. So you know, really understanding at that personal level, what it looks like was um individuals all in your buildings, not just the space. You know, we wanna make great spaces, but how can they really affect um the people in those spaces?
So when we think about um how we can serve a community, especially depending on the process you're in, we kind of put together a custom team. And I've had the pleasure of working with Derek for almost all of those twenty. My role is usually to support him on schools on the Iowa side. I also support some schools on the Nebraska side, but I touch project type. X as well. Alley Pointer is almost seventy architects. We don't have any house engineers. That's a big squad. Which allows us to have specialization. The way we manage that then by project type is we give you a customized team. Whether Derek drove most of the thought behind knowing your community better than me on how we would stack this. So you'll see as we add additional members to the team beside this sort of initial master planning and sort of design leadership team. We brought on three people that we think will be exceptional additions to the group led by, and I'm gonna talk about Janie first. Janie lives in Trainer Iowa. Janie and I worked together at a previous firm and we've been together at Alley Pointer for many years now. She leads all of our technical staff. She's the most advanced technical architect we have. She has a passion for Iowa. On Saturdays, I'm not gonna get into what color she wears. Um, Todd Muller's a planner. Uh, Todd does not wear the same colors as Janie on Saturdays. That's kind of fun. Um, Todd is an educational specialist. Todd will come in specifically on some uses. He partners with Chandler a lot on how to maximize educational outcomes. And then Andy Pollard might have my last name, and I've worked with him for about forty some years now. Um. We still treat construction design as two different activities that need to kind of live together. So we have construction administrators. At Alley Pointer that will come in when we get into physical construction. They also advise us through the process as we're working with your kind of team on that as well. Andy spent ten years as a construction superintendent, different kind superintendent before he joined us. So we like hiring people who have written change orders to help manage those in advance. So he's on our side along with a crew of four others that again are specialists just in managing construction. Side of things for us. So we think this team is kind of well-rounded. We know that after you hire us, sometimes needs are gonna change. We're gonna discover things with you, and we're gonna need a broad base for that. So we will also supplement this with the right people at the right time. Anything you wanna add that, Derek?
Uh, you know, I think you, you touched on uh most of it. Uh, when I started at Alley Pointer twenty years ago, I was number seventeen, and we're almost seventy now. It still feels like a, a small firm, the way we communicate. Uh, and that's a, that's a big advantage. We can bring the, the capacity of a large firm and the skillset of a large firm with kind of that uh, uh, small boutique firm feel. This is just a little bit about our approach, the big picture. Uh, it's kind of a step process that we developed. Around, I don't know, twelve, fifteen years ago, specifically for schools and to react to kind of that pre-bond uh piece. A lot of what we do is just really about transparency, honesty. Uh, and getting the information out there. Uh, you have that and can make an informed decision as a school board based on what you're hearing from your community. Starts with the where are we now? A big piece of that. Done already with your excellent assessment that uh SS has uh completed for you. Then we go to the where do we want to be? Where do we want to go? Uh, phase. That's a lot of this visioning, the creation of this master plan, and what are some of those. Uh, bigger projects that are gonna come out of that master plan as a first phase. And the how do we get there piece really starts to be in, are you gonna try for a bond referendum? Is this a save? Uh, project or a save and pebble project? Maybe there's some, a private donor that's gonna uh get a piece of that, but that's how we break up. Um, this process that, that we will work with you.
Uh, this slide is um just kind of another layer on top of the one that you just saw. So this really starts to become a roadmap. So. One of the first things we do, um, once we're brought on, on to your team is really defining that roadmap from start to finish. And discussing the milestones, kind of when stakeholders want to be jumping in and out of meetings, what our team is doing behind the scenes, what specific milestones there are. And then we kind of set that start to finish timeline and what those expectations are along the way from, from us and from you guys, just making sure that we're really hitting all those key timelines and targets that we're all aiming for. So this is just kind of another layer onto the previous one, but really just setting that, that roadmap, um, setting us up for success as we start working with you.
Yeah, with the idea that we're gonna have that, that master plan completed by that um May timeline that you were asking for in your uh RFP.
Yeah, so when we talk about the, how do we get there? We look at our, our, so. Um, a couple of the early on things that we like to do, you know, obviously really engaging your stakeholders, whatever group that decides you want that to be. If that's just this group, if it's expanding to your administrative staff, that's expanding to your community, really listening in. Um, and getting that information from you all, and then taking them through a couple of activities that we like to do. Um. So a couple of images you're seeing down here, uh, on the bottom left is a, um, we call a red dot, green dot, um, activity. So really starting from the beginning and getting everybody on the same page. So we're moving forward and we're building consensus as we go. Um, we're bringing in differing ideas, but allowing everybody a voice to speak, see what's out there, and really dream big. Then as we continue to go through all of that, really honing in on those aspirations, um, and prioritizing them. So in the second screen, you'll see um, an activity that is uh momentum meter survey. So it's one of the activities that we do, um, that gives us lifetime results and allows us to survey whatever size of group or whoever you want to. So. Um, different than a survey that you send out, you get results back, you analyze them, then you go back out maybe to your community or your stakeholders. That one can allow us to really build consensus in the room, um, anywhere from, you know, a smaller group like this to sixty, seventy, a hundred people. Um, it also allows the opportunity for everyone in the voice, or everyone in the room to have a voice, um, and really see, okay, maybe this group feels very strongly about this, but we're not able to hear it because they're not, you know, being felt that they can speak up at a meeting. So really allowing us to get everybody's opinions and thoughts in there. Um, then as we continue to build this process, and maybe we, you know, we've gone through a couple iterations, iterations of things, um, we like to do an activity called journey mapping. So taking everybody's experience and their different, um, you know, paths through the day, paths through the building. Um, whatever that might be, experiences with your campus, and really looking at where they're growing, what their experience is like through this journey, um, and this destination, and making sure that it makes sense for everybody that's coming through the space. So whether that's a student. Um, a parent, a grandparent, you a school board members, um, somebody from a neighboring town coming in, making sure um that everybody can understand what's happening in your building, where to go, you've got safety and security, and all of those needs met. So really taking this opportunity to um explore and make sure that we're dialing up, dialing in on those needs.
I'd like to add, the philosophy of journey mapping kind of evolved from our initial assumptions about multiple clients in different sectors. So if you think about being the job we have of learning about your school district. And if our buying goals are perhaps to elevate educational outcomes or to make a teacher's day less hectic, or we can identify a lot of things, it takes us to decide with empathy. And that is an activity that takes practice. It's also, I think, one of the great things about pre-bond or referendum work is journey mapping. Those in your community that are gonna agree with you, those that are gonna disagree with you, and those that are on the fence. What could you do to help us walk in their shoes about this referendum and your priorities and designing with empathy? It's kind of one of the things we take pride in doing, and it's also led us into this idea of space-making, which is evolutionary process for us. So. It takes practice, but we take pride in kind of walking that route with you. Believe me, we've heard sometimes people don't agree with referendums. We know there are a few people that don't like their taxes, etc., etc. We think that's a really important thing for your designers from day one, such as a builder's job, to think about that process for us to walk together, make sure on the same page.
Uh, Chandler mentioned the momentum meter poll and the, the. Image down there, that's a tool that you use your phone. We ask a question. We can get live results. Um, oftentimes that is a, that is a tool where. Uh, you may have a loud voice that is either in opposition of what you're trying to do, uh, but it's not the majority. This gives a voice for those people to be able to voice their opinion, but then actually see, well, you know, I might be the loudest, but I'm not in the majority. Most, most of the times that then solves the issue of then being able to move forward. And uh, because you've given that person an opportunity to hear them, to voice their opinion, they can see real time. Maybe I'm not as important, or maybe my ideas aren't as big as I think, uh, and you're able to, to move forward. This slide just talks a little bit more big picture. And we put this on here because uh, the state of Iowa has changed their rules on how often. Uh, you can hold a bond referendum election, right? And that's now once a year in November in that, that primary election time slot. So you have to be very strategic. About when you're gonna do that, that bond, um, and make sure that you will, you are gonna have the votes. For the support uh to be able to pass that, because if you don't, you, we are waiting an entire year, and there have been instances where then. That next date doesn't quite fall in that three hundred and sixty-five day waiting period, uh, and you actually have to skip, skip a year in that process. So you wanna be very, make sure you're really looking at the dates. The other piece of this is, you know, we lose a little bit of a momentum over the summertime. Everybody's gung ho about school, summer break. Uh, kind of, you, you lose a little bit of that momentum, and you have a very uh kind of hectic August, September, October, November timeframe with. Uh, a group making recommendations to school board that we would like you to proceed with. Supporting uh whatever option, it does require a bond issue, collection of signatures, um, and then actually getting out there for some bit of information on, on a campaign. So you can see how that uh schedule might, where that works for. Uh, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. Um, and then you'd like to have some community engagement meetings in that process.
Our first case studies is gonna be some work we did for Springfield. Um, Chandler, I gotta join together on discussing this. So we're initially hired by the school district. Brett Richards was still superintendent at that time. Um, they switched after a couple of our projects, new superintendent comes in, we continue to work with them. I think this is an interesting project as a case study because um initially we were hired kind of for a messy renovation and a new elementary school. So they'd already done the pre-planning, they had sort of their marching orders in place, and we came in with a pitch that was just gonna be efficient use of space, design excellence, and then some objectives in the community. We've since moved into a phase where we're doing a lot of master planning for them, and that's a part of the project we're doing right now. Often we get in with a district through master planning personnel, which is a little backwards, but.
Yeah, so to speak a little bit about that process, um, you see in the slide here, you know, we really wanna understand your goals. Um, the goals for this particular school were, uh, let's look at, okay, what are our long-term goals? They're seeing a lot of growth in this district, a lot of change. So what does that look like for their district? So understanding um where that's coming from, what they want to do as a district. So um, we're gonna kind of work this backwards, actually. So um, we've ended up at this, this kind of goal to have. Um, the, the priority to have everything on one campus in this particular district. Um, so right now their high school and their junior high are here. Um, they're looking at what if we can keep those here and then expand our offerings for athletics, uh. Expand our offerings for educational services here along with that growth. So uh, this was kind of the, the main starting point. Then we worked backwards of, okay, how do we get there? When is this coming? What do we go from there? So this, the projection text going, this is gonna be about twenty years. So applying that to your school, you know, where, where that growth is coming from, looking enrollment projections, etc. Um, stepping back to that ten, tenure phase, okay, how do we get there? What does that look like for our schools? In this particular application, it meant the existing high school still needed to be there, but they could maybe build a new middle school and absorb some of that growth. Um, and then to today, it's a kind of zero to five-year plan, looking at, okay, if we need this building to last us potentially ten, maybe even twenty years till we get a new high school building here, what do we need to do to this building to make it sufficient? So we've gone through um an extensive facilities assessment, so learned what you've done here, um, along with an intensive um programmatic study. So what um their building capacity hold, when you were maxed out all of their classrooms, what their staff capacity is, uh, what their programming capacity and limits are. Um, we hear that a lot with districts, um, as I'm sure you guys all have, you know, different, different ones here, but of what those programs are, but there's often program limits. Um, so really looking at and studying what those needs are, um, and coming to a plan that works for um them to get this school up to kind of a twenty-year plan, um, so they can do some other things and allow for growth within their district. Um, so really wanna uh explore that with you all and see where, you know, where you wanna go, what those long-term goals are and how we back into some of that.
So our approach to staffing on that one, I think, is a good example for this district as well. Chandler's been consistent from the beginning. You were on the first sort of really studies throughout. Um, one of our partners, Rick, who is our main client contact, and he's a designer, but also the project management consistent throughout. I supported that team and my role is partner charge. Um, but then we brought in different expertise based on the first project was a messy renovation. We say all renovations are messy, I mean, especially with the school calendar year. So we have some experts that supplemented that, but we kind of kept Chandler and Rick consistent, so there's no loss of knowledge. Even as we've had members of the board change, we had a superintendent change. You shouldn't have to pay for updating the architecture team and engineering team though, if your needs change and these projects take lots of time. So. The advantage of a big firm is we can kind of do that in a way. We're also not gonna switch people out though, because we also have, are highly motivated to remember what we did five years ago, so that it makes sense in the future rounds. And, and I think that's the approach we're looking forward to here. You'll see some of the same faces and leadership for sure throughout, but we'll also supplement that with specialists if something comes up.
This is uh another case study for you East Mill School District, uh, just between Glenwood and uh Red Oak. There's where this is located. Um, this was, they're, they're a younger combined district, so within ten years of being combined, um, from multiple schools, uh, they had multiple communities. Uh, a number of problems related to open enrollment out and wanting to try and solve that. Uh, we went through a lot of iterations of creating a master plan and what could be implemented uh in different phases for them. Ultimately. Um, that community engagement process and that pre-bond piece led them to one campus, a pre-K twelve building uh in Malvern. Uh, with multiple communities supporting that because we took them through that, that process and uh built the reasons why we were wanting to do what we were uh proposing there. Um, that passed, uh, was constructed. They just opened this uh fall on time, on budget. Um, their, their, their new complex in, in Malvern. One thing I do wanna point out, we talk about um working for all these schools in Southwest Iowa, and our goal is for every school district in Southwest Iowa to absolutely be the best. The competition. In, in reality, is not uh Atlantic versus Red Oak and Harlan. There's some great co- competition there, but what we're really competing against is Waki, Johnston, West Des Moines, those big schools. Uh, to attract people to this Southwest Iowa area and to our school districts and.
So our third case study is Red Oak. Um, this one was uh really fun to work on, not only because we maybe heard some fun stories about Barrett. Growing up in this school, so we heard some fun behind the scenes stories, but um not, you know, unlike you guys, they had a lot of concerns with the safety and security and student entry, kind of daily entry point. And then it just, they, this is also kind of a messy renovation in addition. Um, so this was a, a fun one because we merged the two kind of addition and existing building together to create kind of better sightlines throughout the building and better access for activities. So. We created kind of more common areas so that when you come in, have your activities entry into the new um gymnasium, that there's kind of large, open, common areas adjacent to those, so that, you know, as people filter out, go to the concessions, gather during long tournament weekends, you've got kind of these larger spaces that can have that capacity. Um, and then, you know, they also explored kind of STEM opportunities and other programs that they integrated into their school system at that time. Um, so yeah, that was kind of an, another fun case study, kind of going through a renovation component and a, a new building addition with the integration of new students and new programs.
And this is another one that is transitioned um to a new master plan. So um, with the, you know, that, that first renovation and addition, but looking at, okay, where does this district want to go? Where do they want to expand? What are their needs? Uh, you'll see here. A couple um stakeholder engagements. This one was a little bit different. There were momentum meter questions involved here, um, but they have right now four separate, different, four separate buildings in their district. Um, and then this opportunity was to get all of their staff from all of those districts together in a couple of different meetings. So it wasn't, you know, meeting with three hundred people all at once, but more along the sixty scale. Um, but looking at their opportunities, their weaknesses, and their needs. So again, hearing from everybody what those are, but then really trying to build consensus, again, speaking to what Derek's saying really are, you know, sometimes the loudest voice isn't always the one of what, what's needed. Uh, but sometimes they are, and then you just uh have to balance that. So really trying to understand what's happening, um, and engaging in your community. Again, that's really, I really nerd out on some of those things. But then looking at how that translates to their actual building. So um, being really intentional about keeping this really nice organizational sys- system that they have going, um, and it was established kind of the first go-round. Um, again, intuitive way finding things like that where um the building starts to get out of the way of the students get. Um, again, intuitive way finding things like that where um, the building starts to get out of the way of the students getting that they can really focus when they're in the building on learning and not, where am I gonna, am I wearing, you know, enough clothes? For the right clothes? Am I getting fed? Am I getting access to enough light? Do I know where I'm going or what's expected of me in a day? So really letting the building get out of the way. Um, and those things kind of be intuitive and then focusing on their learning. So they don't have to think, oh, I have to go down all of these exact hallways. How can we continue this in a potential new addition? Um, to get similar circulation and wayfinding in there, along with access to natural light. Creating some common spaces and shared learning areas, but again, balancing that with safety and security. Um, wayfinding so that at all points, there's either a point of safety and security, a secondary support system. Uh, or views and things like that down corridors.
One of the great things about this, that project in Red Oak was uh, one of our first experiences with construction manager agents on a school project. Um, and that's in a really important relationship there and budgeting that uh, that entire project and that process that allowed Red Oak to come in under budget uh, with their master plan. They had a, a ten thousand square foot field house. They were able to actually add that uh, to an earlier phase because of the money that they, they saved. And that really is about that relationship with construction uh, manager, which we've done a number of those. I did, we've, we've not been able to work with Estes on one, but I did do a little bit of homework. Um, called a couple of superintendents that have um, worked with them and I think that there would be, there's a great uh, potential because of the things we've heard uh, about how they work, how they communicate and how they budget very consciously. Um, it aligns very much with how we try to approach uh, projects for a school district. That really is about being a team uh, for you as a school district. Uh, we did hear a little bit um, about your facilities on our, on our walkthrough and we made some notes just on the uh, uh, from the facilities assessment regarding safety and security. Those will at some point become urgent uh, needs in your school, school districts. Um, you know, your high school right here, you walk in a long ways before you get to an office. That's kind of a, a thing we try to avoid anymore. Um, as you do your roofing projects, you know, those are things you need to, to take care of. Uh, and then if you talk about getting above ceilings, that's where we work with those uh, construction managers and they're gonna say, hey, while you're doing that, go ahead and do your fire sprinklers because uh, once you're up there, let's, let's be up there. Uh, we did also kind of make some notes on, on your goals and your objectives through this uh, process, uh, and we're, we're on board with being able to help uh, move forward with all of those. Uh, and then you've got, uh, I think we, we would have some process of working through you know, where your high budgets are versus where your priorities are. Um, some of what's necessary for a lot, if you want to replace carpets and finishes on a wall, but it's a need uh, related to maybe elementary capacity and program uh, right there. Uh, I start guys, I kinda pushed through some of those just seeing where the, the time was at, like, no, you're good. Um. We did wanna just talk about, um, Mindy wanted to talk about a little bit some of the unique opportunities that we observed um, in your school district when we did the, the walkthrough there a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, one thing that, you know, in talking with uh, Dr. Johnson, you know, one thing that would be fun to explore is kind of this campus approach. Um, you know, with the proximity of both of your sites, I know that there's kind of a block between them. But, you know, thinking about how we can, even on different sites, and that's kind of the direction and the path that you move forward with. Still talk about kind of the safety component, the engaging kind of campus, not only with each other, how they can kind of become more engaged towards each other, but to your community itself. Um, and just kind of making, you know, looking at the whole master plan and really understanding how these can really engage with your community. Um, what we, when we start to look at kind of the aerial perspective, we see some land that is kind of an interesting um thing to explore, cuz there could be some fun things from like a blocking diagram with your existing buildings and new additions and um additional infrastructure. So it was just was really fun to kind of tour your existing spaces and see kind of the and here's some of the pros and cons of those facilities and really diving into uh, what the opportunities can be um, to really kind of engage those two sites that are currently separated, but how can we make them feel more cohesive?
We're last five. That kind of brings us to the end of what we wanted to present to you. What questions do you guys have for uh, us in this process on what you've seen here to, tonight? Probably heard a lot from the other, the other firms that you've uh, interviewed so far.
I guess I, I, uh, you might have touched on the answer to this, but what, looking at our facilities and our buildings, what do you see as the biggest challenge? And also what are you most excited about in this project?
Uh, yeah, I, you know, the biggest challenge is always just multiple facilities. Most school districts, you know, they're gonna talk about um fewer and newer facilities, particularly from a maintenance perspective. Uh, that's, that's kind of the, the easier approach uh, from uh, custodial or in what, you know, fewer facilities to look at your uh, food service, transportation, all of those sorts of things. Um, I, when we look at this, Mindy kind of touched on that a little bit, but you have this great campus opportunity where you have um, the ability to maybe bring down uh, some pedagogies from the higher education world. You, you see that a lot. There's things where uh, higher education implements uh, certain learning environments, eventually those kind of trickle down to the pre-K twelve. You have this great kind of campus opportunity where you almost um, feel like you're in a, a smaller college campus with your uh, opportunities to link things there. You have space to be able to expand with additions or new buildings, depending on that that direction. I don't think you're gonna be in a scenario where you're trying to buy, you know, eighty acres of ground outside of town to be able to put a new building. So that is definitely uh, an advantage also.
Yeah, one thing I was gonna add to that too is I know Chandler touched on it earlier, but when you think through kind of that journey mapping phase and, you know, maybe there's some efficiencies, even like with your staff and your students being able you know, to maneuver through the buildings that just aren't quite as effi- as efficient or kind of on the security side today that you, you know, that ever-changing world of education and some of the things we're unfortunately seeing kind of um, in communities. So things are gonna be constantly evolving. We also have to like try to future-proof some of that and we try to think flexibility down the road. Um, your facilities are very well maintained, the ones that we toured, uh, they're in great condition. So and there's some really cool architecture with some fun colored glazed block, you know, like our minds, our design minds kind of start um, flowing and think you can do some really fun stuff with some existing conditions that are there today. But yeah, your facilities are in, and are in pretty good condition. Um, but yeah, that's just our job to kind of future-proof and make sure that um, we make these spaces as flexible as they continue um, to change down the road.
Ask one question, 'cause I already kind of know the other question. So your experiences uh, designing learning spaces. We know what classrooms look like today and what they look like in the past, cuz it's the same. Right? Nineteen twenties classroom is no different than the nineteen or two thousand twenty-four class. What, what's today's classroom and, and what's the classroom of the future, ten, twenty years from now? How, how are you gonna design something that we give you today and twenty years from now?
Well, well, while you're thinking about that, we've been doing some research on trauma-informed design and impacts of trauma-informed care. And I think we're all on, on the design side, behind the curve, on the impacts. What, what hasn't? Let me put it lightly. Kids are different today. Their environments are different today. Their reaction to those environments are different. So although the classroom hasn't changed much, everything on the inside of their minds is in a different status. So we're seeing other professions openly embrace this idea that we need to perhaps identify security, safety, access to life, and we're starting to see that applied to schools. And we've been applying it to housing. We've been looking at it in our care facilities, permanent supportive facilities, and we've seen some real gains in research. We've reached out to a couple of bed centers about observing what we've been implementing. Um, we don't experiment on kids. We don't experiment on school districts, but we try to take some of these best practices. So I think the physical rooms won't change a lot in size, but I think we're gonna ask a lot different questions. And we're gonna try to sort of add comfort, security, and safety at a level that it's no longer an afterthought. It's some of the first things we think and talk about, so.
Yeah, definitely. And I think to build on what Jay said, you know, we, and, and what everybody said here a little bit earlier. We are that a little bit larger firm. We've got around seventy people and we work on a variety of projects. The benefit is that if we can take the lessons that we've learned from other projects and see how they are applicable to schools. You know, we learn a lot of different lessons um, from those projects and how we apply them here. I think specifically in education. A lot of, you know, twenty years ago, would we have known that every student was gonna, some districts were gonna be a one-to-one device? Or that, you know, some teachers are gonna want to have their class stand and, or sit on the floor all day, you know. We, we may know some of that today, but where that goes in the future, we also are unsure. So a lot of what we try to design to most flexibility. So that, uh, you know, in twenty years, when the next best thing hits, that you guys are somewhat set, set up as much as you can be for that success. Um, a lot of times you'll see, you know, smart boards have become a new thing that they weren't fifteen, twenty years ago. What do those different systems look like? How can we set up the, you know, the AV, the power and the data where if that's no lo- longer a smart word today, but tomorrow it's something else. Is that infrastructure there to set you up for success without locking you into what's in there today? Um, you'll see that in, you know, what's in the physical built environment. You see a lot of that in furniture. Um, and a lot of that is testing things out. So getting showroom, taking you on tours, seeing what's out there and saying, hmm, maybe this isn't a good fit for us. Well, maybe this is. Because every district is a little bit different. Every learning environment is gonna be a little bit different in how um, you wanna go about teaching things, where you wanna grow your programs and change your things like that. So um, it's a lot of a learning process for, for all of us in this district. And again, bringing everybody on that journey together and building consensus of this is where we wanna go. This is what we think we wanna see next.
We're not, we're not gonna uh, use you guys as test subjects. Uh, and use you as a, a platform for winning any kind of design awards. That's not where uh, we are from that perspective. Um, I've been to, I was recently at an education conference where uh, they presented this school that won all these awards. It had glass walls that retracted and made, you know, the space combined and everything and and sounded and, and looked really cool, but uh, you know, I raised my hand. I asked the, the superintendent, the superintendent or the principal of that building, I said, well, how often do you actually do that? And does it really look like the pictures like that or have the teachers put paper up on all of those glass walls? And both of those were kind of obvious. No, we never opened those, those walls. And yes, the teachers have put paper up there because the transparency is distracting uh, to the kids in that, that particular school. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thanks for sticking around so late too, bud.
And turning the band off. That happened like right when you guys started.
I tell you what, I've been so busy.
I'm so sorry I wasn't here.
Or no?
I'm sorry. Yes, yes, let's take a quick break. If anybody's, go to restroom. I'm sorry. Thank you for
When does the next one come in?
We have a little bit of time built in. Just in case questions are long. I'm sorry, I need to remind you of these.
I've never had one of those.
I can say, Josh, get you something there.
Trying to be healthy.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm not related to.
Yeah, but here I am.
Make sure everybody knows, there is no relationship there.
That's what ranch does.
Break something, I'm gonna.
Uh, I start cleaning at seven.
Yeah, I will stand up and I'll say five minutes.
Dinner for everybody.
I'm ready.
All right, this is our page. And. They came all the way from West Des Moines. You guys know them. We worked with them in the past. Let's put it that way. Uh, they did the high school there currently. And they did the athletics complexes. And that's all I'll do. And I will stand up five minutes and I'll say five minutes. That's more for the board now. You guys will see. All right, thank you.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you very much, um, for inviting us here, um, to spend a little time with you this evening. Um, we'll, we'll start with some introductions and a quick, you should go around and have each one of you introduce yourselves and what your role is in the district. That'd be awesome.
I'm Lisa Jones and I'm the board secretary.
So we're Cambridge board member.
Christie Callat, board member, firm claim board president.
Johnson Superintendent.
Ginny Jordan, uh, board member.
Uh, Josh McLaren, board member.
We know the event.
Term citizen.
So, um, I'll just myself first, uh, Tom Waller with F R K and my role, um, uh, this project will be. Uh, principal in charge of the project, um, worked here in Atlantic for a number of projects. So know the district well, most folks here well, so. Um, that that will be my role for the project and we're just again thrilled, uh, to be here with you this evening.
And I'm Michelle Heintz. I will be the project manager of this project. Uh, I have been with F R K for about eleven years now. I've been managing partner of the firm since, uh, twenty twenty crazy year that was. It's been four years. No one would have guessed. Um, but I will also be helping to oversee our consultants on this project and working with, um. Um, other entities as we drill forward. So I'll be helping with the Ferris. Is there any P team on this one? And then obviously we also have to.
In Beach, uh, I'll be project architect. Project, uh, I work with Tom on the. Uh, facilities, uh, here for the sports complexes back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Been with F R K for fifteen years now. So just some, uh, important numbers and just who we are. Uh, we are over a hundred years old and. I'm like me together are over a hundred years. What I mean is because our firm is over a hundred years old. So. Uh, we're, we're very proud of that fact, but more than that, we're, we're more proud of what we do and how we do it. And what we do is education. We are an education architect. Uh, a lot of other firms will do, uh, a school project here and a school project there. We're, we're the opposite of that. We do almost all schools. We do another project that's not an education here. So it's really our specialty. It's what we do. We're very service minded. We love that that gives back to the community. Uh, and really through all the communities that we work with, uh, throughout the entire state. That sharing, uh, gives us a lot of, uh, retention. So eighty percent of our client title. Is repeat clients. Um, so we, we are very proud of that fact. And it's that service and that extra attention that we give to our clients, uh, that keeps that client coming back. So you might think of us as a West Des Moines architectural firm, but actually we're in Iowa architecture. We work for, uh, districts throughout the entire state from border to border, from river to river.
I was just in Pleasant Valley.
We, we are on the road a lot. Um, so, yeah, just looking at some of our Western Iowa. Uh, experience, of course, you know, we have worked here, uh, this building back in nineteen ninety-six. Uh, so we've been working with you, uh, for twenty-eight years. Um, personally, Tom and I, uh, been working, uh, with you on the, on the. It's athletic facilities, uh, over the last few years. And, uh, some, some other.
Yeah, yeah. The roof is original.
Okay.
Getting your in face this year though, right?
Yeah, so this is an upcoming project.
No, what I'm saying is it's done a good job.
It's held up.
I mean, it started, it started to fail. You got your lifespan out.
Well, twenty-eight years. Yeah, that's about the life that you expect.
Beyond.
But, you know, yeah, that's pushing the limits. So, yeah, I see a potential of product. Uh, with some of the other Western Iowa work we've been doing, uh, Adele, uh, we've got a new high school on the boards right now. Adele did a new elementary school for them just a few years ago. Uh, Carol, we have done a large amount of work. Years, uh, the high school, the elementary school additions, um, just. And another stadium, uh, out, out there in Carolina.
Then, uh, where Josh went up in AC, uh, G C V. Is to use our new athletic facility. We finished there a couple of years ago at the Guthrie Center High School.
And so that's what we do and and how we do it, we're real proud of as well. Uh, just our attention to detail and our. Reputation for putting out a good set of documents gets us, you know, really tight bids on bid day. Uh, gets us, uh, a smooth construction process with as little change orders as possible. Um, we get contractors calling us up all the time and just asking, how are you guys doing it different? Because I'm on a project with another team and it's, it's just a mess. Um, so, you know, we're real proud of the fact of. Not just what we do and giving back to the community, but, but how we do it, uh, that attention to detail and.
And we work on projects of all scales too. Um, big projects, small projects, window replacements for replacement. We do it all, right? We wanna be that one-stop shop for clients. That they don't have to go seek out other people to do work. They can come to us knowing that we are the client that would serve or the, the servant for them.
So, um, that's kind of big picture. We'd like to just walk you through a couple of examples of the master planning process, uh, for a couple of different districts that we've worked with. And how that's played out, um, what the results were and what that process looks like. And then we'll also touch a little bit about. Uh, the support that we have for, um, bond referendum. It sounds like that's very much in the cards as you look toward what your needs might be. Um, so the, the process for us, um, uh, through master planning, we, we really, um. It's important for us to not have just, uh, something you pull off the shelf and we come to you and say. Josh, here's our master planning process. We're gonna do for your district. This is what we do with every district. This is what we're gonna do for you. Our master planning process is very tailored to each individual, uh, district and what their needs are. In fact, um. Uh, for some of the districts, we, we do them over and over again because those needs change in their, the discovery process that we go through. So. Really, it's in a number of phases. And in this case, we would be. Starting with the strong foundation that you have with Estes and the Icat program, work with Mark and and Chad and their team. Um, in January, we'd really start to think seriously about what those obje- objectives are. We put together a master planning committee with you. Uh, the second phase, um, in the winter will be starting to gather information from key constituencies and that is a. Collaborative, co-creative process will be, uh, working with folks around the table and really getting nitty gritty into some of the things that we do. Uh, then we'll start seeing what comes out of that process organically, what those goals and visions are again will be. That'll come from the Icat study that you had done and then we'll start, start looking at what those goals, uh, actually will be. We'll refine those goals. We'll look for some solutions. And at the very end of that process, we do have a master planning report. That we will provide to the district and then you will, uh, share that with the community and with your constituency. It will be primarily focused not so much on assessment and evaluation of your facilities, but more assessment and evaluation of. Your education delivery, what your programs are, how your spaces are working, what we might want to address, uh, for those space needs. For education delivery. You know what you need to do for the physical plant side of things. We'll help you determine and discover. Where you're, where you're going with how kids teach, how kids learn and how teachers teach. So that final report, uh, will set you up, will give you a roadmap for five to ten years. And then, uh, in terms of the whole funding process, then we are also, uh, able to offer those services of, of helping you with some, some bond referendum. Think we showed, we talked about that.
Yeah, so just, uh, some things that we typically like to do for bond referendum support. We like to get together a group of committees. You can see all of them. These are just a starting point of different committees. We'd wanna help you guys create. Um, because that can lead efforts to providing a, uh, successful bond. So we would develop a committee-based steering committee that would be based around the campaign. Do you have your visioning committee that was already created? We would say, okay, do you wanna keep the same committee or do you wanna kind of revamp that committee? Bring different people in. Maybe the focus is slightly different than what we initially thought from that committee. So we need to bring in the right committee to start the process. And then we would create a uniform graphic and messaging campaign with doing that. And we would help work with you on that. We'd help you create. Graphics would help you with renderings, with support, things like that. We've done booklets, pamphlets, brochures. You even helped with some marketing on websites or social media campaigns, things like that. That's really important to engage with other, with. People today, right? We have to be active on those sites in order to really have community engagement. Um, the crucial part about creating these subcommittees, the bond issue committee, the finance committee, all of that is because those committees have to be self. Self-driven and you guys as, as a, well, the admin team cannot say you have to vote yes. It has to be all driven by the community. So that's really important. And that's why having these subcommittees is really nice because they can start to break through. Different things that you need. Like you're gonna need a finance committee because you have to be able to put together booklets and pamphlets and brochures. And that has to be funded by that. Finance committee that would be trying to raise funds for that. And then you also would want to have your absentee voting committee, right? That would try to go out and outreach throughout the community, try to get people to vote. Um, and then just obviously we have a ready to, so that's just a starting place. Maybe we don't need all those committees, right? Maybe we need some, maybe we need more. It's just kind of, that's kind of how we like to break it down for that. What we, what we see working that might work well in Atlantic in the timeline, we're kind of. Um, looking at here, in two, in June, we would start the vote yes campaign. So we, or committee, so we'd get that committee together in June. So after the reports had finalized that Tom spoke about. We would get, want to get that committee together and do to start things up. I know summer can be tough sometimes, but before we hit July, let's get the committee together. So that we can try to get people on the same page and try to get those committees, um, um, established. And then in July, we would, uh, try to make sure we had developed graphics and, um, a campaign strategy for July. Cause we're gonna wanna hit it very hard in August and September. So September, we would focus on town halls. So it gets you right after school starts, people are raring to go, or you can even do it as your back to school session, things like that. We've had that work out successfully before, but hosting town halls. Talk about what was planned, what is the ten-year plan, five to ten-year plan? And now what is this bond vote going to be? Right? We don't know what that bond vote is going to be yet, but. And by that time we would. October, um, continuing the campaign, obviously hitting the heart with your committees and getting your absentee voters, getting people out. Putting signs up on lawns, things like that, really getting people activated and motivated and getting tuning through October. And then in November. Obviously it would be the, the vote. So it's really crucial and important for that August, September timeline to get people really interested. Or re-engaging with the world again, right? Summer's fun. We had a good time, but we're already being kind of back on a schedule for fall. So that's good to get people re-engaged after. After the summertime.
And you'll note that we don't have a year described to this. As we go through this process. Your master planning might say, hey, you've got Pepel and save money to your initial priorities, maybe a. Geo bond isn't until twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-seven, but as Michelle was, Mr. Michelle was going through that. That schedule of how that rhythm looks for bond, uh, vote preparation, um, if that could happen. Any year, it really begins in the summer. So you hit that fall. You don't wanna do it too far in advance because you can get just weariness on that. You don't wanna have too much publicity and heated power with the yard signs and all those. Dave driving around town, honking his horn with the big billboards on. You, you have to be very judicious and careful about how long that, that process is, but works for whatever year it is and. Yes, and you're gonna. This is exciting.
Well, no, so for, for us, we've been fortunate to work with a lot of districts around the state of Iowa, but we have a ninety-seven percent success grading. When it comes to successful bond votes. And I truly think it's, it took, the reason is two, two reasons. The clients we work with know how hard they, we, we prep them for how much work it's going to take in these committees to get it passed. The second thing is this visioning process is really important. So that upfront visioning and figuring out the goals. It's set by the community, not set by us, not set by any individual in particular. So they're engaged and they feel like they've been heard. That is the number one reason a bond is successful. I mean, I, I know this is more, uh, one of Tom's projects, we're not gonna go into detail on that one, but Collins Maxwell, uh, was a district that struggled with the bond vote. For a long time. And, uh, Tom and hi- and, and his team went in there and they, um. Were re-engaged with the community and listened to them. And the first time around, successful bond vote. Because we totally changed the plan based on the community feedback. So very important that we have the community feedback. And I think that is one of the reasons why we have had such a successful bond vote. Some engaging graphics, these are just to start that we've created for other districts, um, for bond votes that have been successful. Um, but this is just a, a starting point. It all depends on what your needs are and we'll, we'll establish that throughout the process to really figure out what we.
So what, we, we count on, uh, the team, uh, some members that we have on our, uh, on this, on these projects as well to provide. We're not so good at kind of graphics or, or exterior things. Dave and his team excel at that too. So. We need to find graphics that tell a wonderful story and get people excited about the potential is, uh. If, if they wanna see something, uh, but they know that they're moving.
Yeah, you know, we go beyond just the pretty pictures, helping with brochures, helping with infographics, things like that, that really helps lay. The land for what the, what the actual, um, end result wants to be for the district.
So we'll go through two, um, districts and we'll be very mindful of time, um. We wanted this to be somewhat informal. If you have a question in the middle of things, just please ask. We'll try to make sure we have a little time at the end for Q and A, but. A district, uh, just to your north and east, uh, the Adele, Minnesota, Minburne District. We've done three master planning, uh. Uh, processes with them. Each one had different results. Um, and, uh, we have looked at, uh, the three communities and the buy-in from the three communities for the, the pathway moving forward. Put together, uh, master planning book for them to use as the roadmap. And, uh, you can tell this is just a really long and skinny district and how you, how you get that continuity into all the districts and what those needs are. You can imagine that it was hard, um, to know that like up in Minburne, those facilities, you know, how do we make use of those? How do we make use of the ones in DeSoto when the focus is really there in Adele? So really. Having tough questions, exploring difficult things, working through it again to get that, that engagement. Um, we had three bonds with that, uh, district. Uh, each one of them, uh, we were in the eighties for, um. For a percentage group who worked. So, um, it really is, uh, in these, in this case, we did, we did a, uh, facility assessment. Master planning, monitoring for referendum support. And then now we've been doing project implementation with them. A, um, uh, well, a little bit more, uh, information gathering, of course, we've kind of gone through that. Uh, lots of different options and conceptual design generated that report. And in this case, uh, resulted in that new elementary school and. And in this case uh resulted in that new elementary school and um. Uh we are currently working um break, we'll be breaking ground this spring for a brand new base school for them, so. You can kind of see here. What that timeline looked at and what those numbers were. It's really a process of discovery, we went into these not knowing what the end result was gonna be, it was not presupposed. Think that's the case here, every one of you around the table has different ideas of what. The priorities are gonna rise to the service uh for your master planning process. That's that's kind of scary, but it's also, we have to be very deliberative, so we. Find out where those priorities are and you get get that by and I want to have a successful process and and hit those needs uh. Right ahead, so. Yeah, at ADM and then I think uh Rochelle talking about another district.
Yeah, so Newton Community School District, that's a little bit more east than ADM. Um that districts is really interesting, um history on that town in general, Mayte used to obviously be the the cap or headquartered there. Um so it's seen some um. Population decrease over time. But we were in there in uh the mid two uh twenty, mid tens, the names, yes, mid tens. Um about twenty fourteen. And we started working with them on a master planning study for looking at their existing facilities and grade configuration. So we went through the process more evaluating their grade configuration, how they were using spaces. They had one school, elementary school, that wasn't actually being used as an elementary school, it was being used as an admin center and an alternative so school. So that's how they use that, it was determined during this master planning and kind of discovery period that it would be maybe better to re-capture that as an elementary school. So. By doing so, means that we would need to reevaluate their current middle school and one of their elementary schools that were actually attached. And it was an older building in the nineteen sixty. That was really hard to renovate, so we explored multiple options with that particular building, but. End result, they opened four. Um elementary, there are four elementary schools back up as a PK four. And then they we they did a five eight grade configuration for a a middle school and then they did a nine, they have their nine twelve building that they didn't. Really mess with the grade configurations in that building. But the interesting part of this community is that it took a lot of planning for the five eight building, that's where we focused in. And that required a bond vote to do any work at this uh five eight building. It is kind of houses, two separate buildings that were attached by a central uh kind of hub or common space. That really wasn't functioning well for them anymore, there was one addition that we evaluated that was worth saving. That we actually ended up um. During the visioning process. Ended up discovering that people wanted to keep that gym, so initially we weren't going to keep this gym. We were, you're like, you don't need this gym, we're gonna build you a bigger gym, this will be what you need. And they were like, no, we want the gym. Said, well, okay, this was built two thousand or so, it's fine, it it functions well, so what we had to kind of rethink about the structure that was around that gym. And so reevaluating that during this discovery and envisioning creation phase. This is where we brought the public in, because that was the building that was gonna require a bond vote. So we actually planned the building and master planned the building with the community. Knowing that they would, they would be the ones voting for this building. So these are actual pictures from that session, this is them taking phone blocks of programming that's needed. For that facility and actually design, you know, kind of trying to program it and design it how they felt like would be a good. A good educational experience. Lot of charrettes and meetings with them to do that. But that is what led to the um. The bond committee that was so important, these people actually continued on into the bond committee. And then broke out into those subcategories. This community struggled with getting buy-in from the community, the community was the older community. Um and so they really had to push a lot of people out there to the streets, a lot of phone calls, they had a lot of countries going on, calling people, going to people's houses door to door. To try to get a bond vote and. They were successful first time. And that community is, it it could be, it was, you know, we were, there was concern that was gonna be a little harder, but they were able to get it passed and I think it was in. Just below seventies, if I'm remembering correctly, but that's that's pretty good for that particular district, so. Um that project moved forward and forward with a new um. New middle school um that was built around an existing gym. And um creating new spaces for them because their building from nineteen sixties just wasn't gonna give them those kind of spaces anymore. Even if we tried to renovate it. Another thing we did during that time is relocate their admin building and their alternative school to an old Ivy building. That we got in and renovated and re-purposed into some of the existing photos here. And uh. The new photos of the facility there, so kind of totally revamped the building and reused and re-purposed it. Um I think the key takeaway from this project for Newton was that we continued and run out another master planning process with Newton. Um and right now we're we're it's leading to two additions to their elementary school. So. We're not needing a bond vote at this time, but they're also we're in a third phase of that master planning, again, like Tom said, we just kind of. Like to build off of those master planning plans, so.
So interesting about this building is the custodial staff are required to respond to, there's a spell on aisle thirteen still within the. So we. We we again, I wanna be mindful of time and uh we'll draft things up here and we would just really. Sorry. Okay, good, but I wanna make sure we have some time for Q and A um. I I hope what's come across in our presentation is the value we put on the input from your constituency, from your steering committee, from the community. From those of you who are passionate about Atlantic schools and where the the future is going to be. Um it almost sounds like you see those manipulatives. We're asking you guys to be the architects and design things. Well, actually, we are. What our expertise is, we know how to put the drawings together, we understand. Education delivery for future ready schools, again, how students learn, how teachers teach. Moving forward, we bring all of that to the conversations and work together to co-create. What is gonna be best for the Atlantic schools. That that's so important to us and I think that's why bond referendum votes have been successful in the districts that we've worked with. Because it is that organic, everybody participates, everybody feels like they have been heard and and have agency in that process. And then uh we look forward to putting together um the documents, working together with contractors and ending up with um. Uh I I I have not heard that folks in Atlantic are unhappy with your your new athletic facility, so. At the end of the day, it's a real celebration of the hard work that everybody put into the process in what that end result is. We would. Dearly love to continue the relationship that we have with Atlantic schools. Uh it would just be wonderful to be back in the community again, helping you sort through these things. Walking around with Dr. Johnson um here at the high school as well as at Washington. Just seeing some real clear needs that have already been identified through the ICAT process, but just thinking about how can we. Do some transformative moves, how can we attend to those uh future ready school needs that you have in the district? Um we we would would love to have this opportunity. Um we're an Iowa based firm, we're committed to Iowa, we're committed to education. Each one of us come to work each day and um are 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 excited to be able to be working uh in the education sector and focusing on that. We have just a couple of things we wanna leave with you here too, just a cou- couple of examples of. How that master planning process uh played out with a couple of districts and specific projects. So we have several of them just to leave with you for for you to look at after the fact. Um we would have loved to pad a couple hours to talk with you tonight, but we know that's unrealistic. Um and we would uh dearly love to. Ask answer any questions you might have or touch back on something and go back to the slide like. I'm I'm guessing um. Laura or or Beth or Chad or Mark probably primed the pump, but. Here's some questions we should ask all these architects to come in and if not, we we can prime the.
Chad gave us a lengthy list, I don't think we have that at all. So my my question for you would be, you know, after having looked at our facilities here more recently, what do you see as our greatest? Challenge and what um? Are you most excited about in terms of? The project?
I think um. That the challenge, first of all, was just, uh though we're very excited to have been here in the nineties and done this building, this building is of the nineties, how can we create? Um education spaces in your high school for where kids, how kids are learning, group-based learning. Uh cross-disciplinary learning, how can we uh look at opportunities here? I think um. The uh the adjunct building that you put up between um the gymnasium and your stadium. Um is is a great thing, I think that there is certainly an opportunity to. Consider how you might look at, I know that one of the things you've been thinking about is. An indoor um rec center or or field house. Um the challenge would be, where is the best place to locate that? How can we do that, it gets you the size that you need, but do that economically, is that a pre-engineered metal building? How does that integrate with the rest of your discipline? I think at the lower elementary school level too, um it's just amazing, Beth, you were saying there what like twenty six kids in some of those. Kindergarten classrooms that that you know, that is an area that that will be a real challenge, but I think there are some neat opportunities there. Um. There could be radical transformations that need to happen in Washington to to create uh new and and more vibrant spaces, you've got some good bones. Um I don't know the name of the custodian here uh who was working down in the south wing. We were just wandering around, I was like, he did his job, were you people here, what are you here? We explained and he opened up the door, showed us around, um. It's. You know. Your facilities have been kept up so well over these years, so it would be a great starting point to think about um. Prioritization, probably the biggest challenge would be prioritization, you you don't have all the money in the world. Uh so how do you, how do you stretch that that dollar? Think one of Tim had mentioned, one of the things that that we have contractors ask us. How do you guys, how do you guys do it? We are doing projects for square foot number that. Are even in this day and age are are just nuts, the the new element, the new high school project we're doing for for Adele Solomond. We have that projected at three hundred and fifteen dollars a square foot and I think that's realistic um. If you're kind of paying attention, you know, Chad and Mark would know, that's that's a very economical building in this day. I think we're gonna be fine there. So we we know how to stretch a district dollar um. You are the stewards of your constituencies. Uh cash, you know, if that's a serious, serious job that you have. You hate change orders. Um and you don't like to see bid day numbers coming high. So those are the kinds of things that that we, we like those kinds of challenges. That's a great question. By the way, we're free then, I apologize, I didn't, I was listening to you mention, did that, did that hit?
Yes, yes, and I'm assuming that the challenge is what you're most excited about.
Um. Absolutely, we're we're driving over here tonight talking about, you know, we love doing, we love doing jigsaw puzzles, isn't that fun? You know, going at the the Christmas break, is that a great time to sit around the table and jig, so those kind of challenges uh that that. That that's what motivates us, that's that's really as architects, we're problem solvers. Though I hate to. Problem solving sounds negative. Um it is opportunity um pursuits, let's put it that way, how's that? I just made that one up. Pretty good. Other other fresh changes. You guys have been so great because it's in the evening, you're going through all these sands, you probably had dinner, man, I'd be like. I'd be on a, you know, just zoned out.
Hope you're not driving back tonight.
Yeah. Thought about uh doing the Airbnb at the Valeska um expert house.
Projects out in Nebraska, one of your designs remind me of Sandy Creek.
Yes, we did, um we were called in by an architecture firm, um. Think if I'm. HBA, we've done with HBA in Omaha, but um. They're out in Carney, I say that right? Um Wilkins. They asked us to come in and work on that con- school consolidation project.
So a lot of your design reminds me of Sandy Creek.
Yeah, yep. So we came in as a design architect and um worked with them, but you've not done a whole lot of Nebraska work. We could, when we're asked to to participate in something like that, we certainly do and we come in as a designer architect and the other. Architect in Nebraska would be the architect of record. But our 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 focus has really been than Iowa, love Iowa. For Iowa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, if you have any further questions, I'm sure Mark and Chad have said channeling them uh through them and we'd be happy to. Thank you. Good luck with your decision. Every day, every day. Ready for Christmas break.
Part of during COVID, when we all thought the shaking hands was not here.
Thank you.
How's it feeling after a long day, Chad? How's your knee?
I I. I didn't start today today.
Okay.
I thought it was, it's gonna be ten thirty, so let's just kind of start the day a little later. You know, there's somebody else out there, Mark? Yeah, oh, okay, yeah, they are, all right, cool. Do you wanna just keep rolling? That way we cut some timeouts.
We're good.
Yeah, yeah. And then we'll talk about, I mean. No, no, we went to Pizza Ranch, I'm over here trying to fight that. Let's go to Pizza Ranch and I'm like, oh, okay. I didn't realize that I could sit in here like that, just like put me to sleep.
Did your husband get his stuff done?
Yes, and I'm making drawstring bags right there, embroidered drawstring bags to hold each of your presents.
Okay, good.
Made one.
Last time we talked, you were just thinking about ideas.
Jenny, would you make me a Michaela bag?
Definitely need something like that. Have some lovely pattern.
I think you wait, I'll see, I'll run over, I'm gonna walk, I'm gonna stay right here. That's gonna be a. Bob, how you doing? What happened here?
So I uh I had a year in Nebraska and when it sealed it. It had a staff section, so I didn't know it till uh I picked out, I went to me, I don't care, so. They need to come back up. And they call me after the day.
Thank you so much, thanks for handling everything.
It was, I haven't slept in like a day and a half. It was I haven't seen it in like a day and a half. That's all right.
Good for you.
I'm okay with that. Um so this is
Suddenly decide to be overachievers. Just one like I was counting on them all the meeting.
Or I'm sorry, March third.
This is my husband. Our God went to the bathroom yesterday. And so my husband said, he is No, we're really working on the discipline because I got a job.
What we'll do is we give you guys
We keep apologizing.
Yeah, no, I agree. Need the other one. Need the picture too. Got your picture in a couple of years. Looks like senior picture. I had your hair. I've been here twenty years, guys. I got a nice Don't I? I really don't. I got stopped right there. Get it. No, we have uh they're working on their. Oh, yeah, they're helping on uh. It's not they hit enough. I get an update. We're got here and that updating now is updating. Pretty gallery showing. Amazing. I don't want twenty eighty one.
Well, good evening. We are Barnburg Group. Move on to my name is Sarah Houston. Uh I'm a project manager with uh our firm. And I've been with Barnburg Group for seventeen years and a graduate from Iowa State and I work primarily on K twelve projects and municipal projects. So.
And I'm a bridge way with Barnburg Group. I'm a principal with the firm. Been around for, I'd say thirty five years. So uh some experience there. Uh do a lot of schools, a lot um federal work. Civil, municipal, you name it. We got pretty diverse, really, basically, but um I graduated from University of Nebraska. So I guess there's a Nebraska fans here, so they have the turtle here. Anyway, we're excited to be here tonight. Looking forward to presentation.
And hi everybody. My name is Eric Henderson. Um uh with the engineering partner for Barnburg Group, but this I'm from I Meg. Uh I'm representing the engineering team. So my background is in mechanical engineering. I'm a principal um at I Megan um based in the Des Moines location. Um I uh from Central Iowa, went to Valley High School and uh Luther College in Iowa State. I worked in the Chicago area for about ten years, primarily in healthcare and education and moved back to the Des Moines area in twenty seventeen and then with the same firm, ever since for the seventeen years with the same government. Um looking forward to this opportunity and I work with you all. Should probably pop up Dave Tilly. Yes, so they we've uh actually, we'll we'll get to here with him in a little bit here, but we've been doing a little bit of reconnaissance work at you at your facility. So Dave Tilly from our team uh went through, did the facilities assessment at at several of the buildings in the district already. So as a part of the the assessment process.
Yeah, so here's the rest of our team. Uh Sasha with our office, uh is architectural designer. We have Julia, who's a grants manager. So she helps um people find grants that may be applicable to their projects um as a funding source. Uh and then um Snyder Associates uh which you're familiar with here locally. Uh and then the others from I Meg. Um you mentioned Dave Tilly.
Yes, um so like I mentioned, I'm I'm not in here on the project, but Mike McCarty would be our lead mechanical engineer. Um Dave Tilly, the construction administrator, he's again your facilities. Lee Day Lewis is our lead electrical engineer. And then we've also highlighted Ryan Cyril, who is a security expert. Um eh to kind of supplement the the base and heat core services. So should there be some security needs in the uh design master planning process that you feel kind of quite an expertise that not everybody?
Then we've also partnered with KPFF for any structural needs.
I didn't give you the opportunity to introduce yourselves. We're out table.
I'm Lisa Jones. I'm the board secretary. Jody Goodrich, board member. Chrisley Pellet, board.
Laura McLean, board president. Beth Johnson, superintendent. Jenny Jordan, board member.
Josh McLaren, board member.
Thank you. I just give you the opportunity.
Okay, well, we um we looked at your your RFP and kind of some of the the points um that were in um your interview uh questions. We just want to make sure we we really hit those because those seem to be the things that were priority to you and that you would want to know about. So you'll see those headings at the top and then we'll kind of unpack um our perception of those. And if we have anything unclear or incorrect, please feel free to let us know. And uh we want to be here to to work for you and to meet your needs. So we started with looking up your mission statement on your website. Um which I won't read to you, but you can see it there. And out of that, um some of the things that I noticed, you know, providing diverse opportunities to learn. Um you know, developing skills and knowledge in a positive, disciplined, challenging environment. A lot of those things tie to the built environment. And so that is where we would come in is this making sure that your spaces are um utilized appropriately and are gonna be um help you achieve this this mission statement that you have for your students and your staff. Uh some of the goals, um and this is looking at some of the the assessment report was to to optimize the use of your existing facilities as well as considering future needs. Uh so both short and long term goals there. And we've added, you know, developing uh the school and community consensus as we're moving through this process and recognizing that school operational needs while maintaining budget, which is always going to be key for any kind of public entity like a school um that we want to be you know, accurate and and respectful of those and the taxpayers and and we have people to answer to. So um we believe that uh you know, the objective is coming out of this mission statement and the goals set for us would be to utilize the building assessment that um has been provided. And we know that at the current point of that kind of the highlights of the the different buildings was safety and security, building improvements, site improvements and new facilities. So really digging into those, uh reviewing the current district programming to see if it aligns with current educational trends or uh new ideas going forward. Uh as well as developing a master plan to identify and then prioritize the steps to meet these goals. Um can't do everything all at once, but um you need to have a a list of priorities and then some move to the top and some move further down. Um so we want to help create those uh that master plan and then identify the priorities there. And then again, to determine the appropriate funding source uh to execute those goals and to achieve those goals.
Yeah, that report from Aston's. It's just really a good, was a good start. I mean, that's a good, I think you definitely helps us understand what your priorities are first of all. And the different schools and what their needs are, right? And so that that's a great first step for us. We just need to verify what that's all about. Date ourselves and understand it, right? And then work with the team to make sure budgets are gonna work out for whatever we're gonna build these things and it makes sure the communities feel aware of what pressure. So we want to make sure that we, you know, build sensible schools for you, not household, right? Something that really works for you. So I think it's a team to do that.
Yes, then moving on to some of our uh relevant experience uh both with K twelve and master planning. Uh we have done work uh design services in the district already. We worked on the middle school, the high school, Schuler Elementary. Uh we have provided assistance for bond referendums being passed, I believe in twenty thirteen and twenty sixteen. Uh and then our partners at Snyder have done a fair amount of site improvement to your facilities, parking lots and and um working with the stadium and just various projects throughout the year. So we have a history here and we want to continue to develop that partnership that we've had over the years. Um some of our other districts that we've worked with uh in our our RFP. Um there was a longer list of things. We saw some of the the cut sheets there, but I just wanted to highlight a few of these. Uh Monazuma is, you can see this well down here. We started a very similar process. We did a full assessment of the facility and then did some master planning for them and ended up with two or three projects um over the course of six, eight years for them. Uh as well as Iowa City School. They uh you know, are a large district, have a lot of buildings. And they came in with the master plan, but we were able to support them and and be a part of seven or eight different projects over the course of a couple of different master planning cycles that they had. So very familiar with this process of of understanding master planning, prioritizing, and then executing those those master plans. Um the same with Nodaway Valley. There's been a few different projects that have come out of that district and being involved in in their master planning. Uh but their new elementary school and then adding on to um a gym onto that later on. Uh our proposed timeline, um here, this again is 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 in our RFP and and what we have submitted already, but just highlighting. You know, basically, it's sort of like kick this thing off in uh January. Meet with you here, your priorities, your needs. We definitely want to listen to you and hear what your concerns are. We will also take that uh assessment report that's been produced and then come and verify some of the things for ourselves. Uh become comfortable and familiar with the existing buildings. Uh and then start doing some of our our community workshopping, which is gathering, you know, a facilities committee, staff, the public, whomever now you decide wants to weigh in on that. And we go through an envisioning success exercise where we list people's priorities and then make a whole big brainstorming list of of priorities and and things that people want. You know, we say your project's over, the building is perfect. What is it? What about it is perfect? What about it do you love? And then everyone in the room gets to vote. And so when you start to see the priorities, you know, every voice is equal, not just the loudest voice, not just you know, the most common voice, but you know, every voice gets represented. And we start to see the priorities rising of what is most important to you as um the the stakeholders in Atlantic schools. So uh doing that helps us to know how to prioritize as we're going in developing the master plan. Then come March, April, be preliminary master plan designs. Um laying out some some those identifying and prioritizing some of those things. And every step of the way, we're bringing it back to you. We're reviewing that. We're waiting for feedback. Uh we certainly, again, continue to want to listen. This is your school district. And we want to be a part of that to assist you with that as best we can. And at the end, uh in May would be the final delivery of this master plan.
Yeah, and it's uh it's still a good get out of the gate on, right? We're gonna start right again, right begin because that's the timeline. It's it's fairly tight for all the things we want to accomplish. We want to make sure we accomplish everything. So to do that, we need to get out of the gate. So it's happy to assist to them.
Does that feel like a tighter timeline than you're used to?
It really depends. I think this initial study helps us quite a bit. I think if long as we're kind of following that initial study, we're fine. And try to bear off and look at different items, different things that might be efficient in that nature, uh that's gonna be a little tougher problem. But I don't see the problem. It's it's what I see today.
Um another question that was asked was about creating twenty first century learning environments. And so in our K twelve experience, here's kind of some of the things that we've seen more recently come up and some of these have already been mentioned. Um building security and Eric mentioned that they have someone on staff that is expert in that.
Yeah, um so Ryan, you you highlighted it in the roster earlier. He's um sub tet certified, which is crime prevention through um environmental design. So making sure that we understand, obviously, it's a very different atmosphere than it was five years ago, ten years ago, twenty years ago in K twelve. So trying to um think about, you know, little ways that we can improve the security for staff and students. Um you know, be be forward thinking with our design. So kind of brings a perspective that um that not every every team has been having.
Another thing is natural light in the classrooms. Uh and this can be achieved by windows, which are great, but we've also come across you know, instances like this where this is in the center of the building. And we brought um solar tubes, daylighting tubes that provide daylight. You don't get the visual, but you do get the daylight, which has the circulating rhythm uh benefits from it. And so that could be into some interior spaces. And we've been doing those in a lot of um renovations and at interior spaces in schools. Uh another thing is the flexibility of spaces. Sometimes you need small classrooms. Sometimes you have a larger class size or you know, a bigger grade coming through and you need to open that up. Or we saw this especially during during COVID, you know, where some of these larger open sharing areas could then be divided into classrooms or they could space apart. Just having the flexibility there has become something that's really important to schools. Uh surfaces, materials uh that are cleanable and durable. Um those are just ongoing, going to be important. And there are a lot of new materials that are very beneficial, that are made of sustainable materials, but they also perform very well. So making sure that those are what is being used and then in any renovation and any finishes that we're providing. Uh the biophilic diva design, you'll see some trees, plants, again, that natural light, even just looking out onto trees, again, getting that nature in some way um is beneficial to learning, to to humans in general. And then another thing is is community and identity. You know, schools are such a big thing in a community. People walk around with their Atlantic High School sweatshirts and and have school colors and things like that. So we need to have ownership and people be excited and feel like they belong um and and feel like that has that community. And sometimes, you know, a uniform design or something that is you know, up to date and cared for well, uh all of these provide this community, this identity, uh this sense of just community environment and and belonging and and wellness that comes with that. So those are some of the trends that we see in environment uh learning environments these days. Uh as far as community engagement, I've already spoken a little bit about our envisioning success exercise and that would be involved in community groups. Uh we've given presentations to staff before. We've attended back to school open houses. Um to know, be parents and and students as they're coming around. We've attended public meetings um to help convey to the public, you know, needs versus uh extravagance. And sometimes uh helping explain that uh is very helpful um to get support for a bond referendum casting. Uh we certainly given presentations at school meetings, facility committees. Uh and then on social media, which you'll see in another slide, you know, that has become very common to um have posts and various things on websites and Facebook. You know, wherever it may be, uh worse than that as well. Um you asked about the success rate. We didn't have a direct way to answer that, but we did want to just show that these have been our successes of of bond referendums that we've been a part of um the last several years. So we do have a history of being uh a part of and supporting successfully past bond referendums.
David had laughed about it, not laughed about it, but just tried to discuss how that would be presented and and there's so many different ways you can put out sentences of how well you're doing, you know, but if it's successful the first year or not. Right? There's a lot of things that Right? There's a lot of things that come into play. And so instead of saying we're ninety nine percent successful, right? We can't really say honestly we are. But we just thought it'd be nice to show you that we've had some success in that area.
Like we're saying, you know, the social media campaign, here's just some examples of our our own company, you know, on Facebook. We provided rendering videos and walkthroughs that we set up on YouTube for Dallas County. Another example of of providing sort of learning event, again, on LinkedIn. So just a variety, a very versatile in any of the social media aspects that you would have. We in our office use Microsoft Teams, so video conferencing is very common. But if it's Zoom or Webex or whatever it is, you know, that's just very common in today's world. So not a problem with that either. So just letting you know that we're we're very capable of that and assist in that.
Yeah, this has really been a very thoughtful piece, you know, to get out to the public, right? Everybody to understand what's going on and and be able just to click from home, right? Understand. Otherwise, you just used to bring pamphlets, right? Hand them out. That worked fine, but boy, this is so much nicer. And it's and you can put so much more information out there now that people could like to. So it's really a great, great medium.
There was a asking about our experience with integrated project delivery. And we have done several projects in this delivery method. And so instead of just listing all those, we've thought we we reflected on some of the advantages of going with this route. And some that we've come up with are, you know, the partnership between the owner, the design team and the construction manager begins they want. And everyone has this shared goal then. And and the coordination throughout the design, throughout construction, it helps with efficiency. During design, we can review documents with the construction manager and they can provide feedback on constructability. There's, you know, sometimes for instance, we were doing a project where we had windows, you know, this size by this side. And they said, if you just go three inches smaller, you're in a standard size and you're going to save a bunch of money instead of being a custom size. That was very helpful. It saved the owner a lot of money and we were happy to make that change and we knew that ahead of time. It also helps, you know, establish innovative tactics for for project phasing because they know how it's going to be built. And so they can help with that. So that we're, as the design team are asking something that can't be done, we're not doing things out of order that ends up costing more time and more money. So that is how the search manager assists in that. And then just the cost estimating. They're using real life construction costs and checking with, you know, actual masons and actual window installers and so on and so forth. Throughout the whole process. So things are just, you know, more accurate and and more reflective of of what's going on in the real world. And then lastly, we just wanted to touch on our our fee. We didn't just give you the number here, but we wanted to talk a little bit about how we came about our fees. So for this first phase, the master planning, you'll see reflected in the fee that that each consultant has a different number associated with them based on their task. And their hourly rates for for each company there. And then we also included the reimbursable expenses such as mileage, printing of presentation materials. That's where the the fee derived from. So if you have any questions on that, please let us know. And the same would be true of phase two, which we put as the bond referendum support phase. And then phase three, if we under the design services of a project, then again, we have, you know, the the can design development, construction documents, bidding and then construction itself. Along with the closeout, so the actual, the rest of the execution of the project. And again, each consultant would have their own time and needs depending on their discipline. And it would be a percentage of the construction cost. And that is per unit per project complexity and the construction cost itself. And again, the reimbursables would be included in that as well. So that's just kind of how we come about our fees. So if there's any questions on that, happy to answer those.
And they had seen the channel.
Okay. Okay. Sorry, we didn't include any numbers. We just thought we'd, so think we're up to our any questions. And that's the end of our presentation.
So I'll start. You're familiar with you are buildings, you know, sort of what we're asking for. What do you see as the biggest challenge in our project and what most excites you about our project?
Well, what's exciting for us is the fact that, you know, I really, really love working and with the school district, right? We love to see what your vision is on the line. And to help present that as part of the process, we just feel like it's exciting. We like to see the outcome where people are at the very end, they're excited about it, right? And the buy-in, the process of the buy-in along with it is important to us. We're they want to make sure that the community is well informed, right? So at the very end, everybody's happy with the decisions that are made. And I know we're not going to make every person happy, right? That always but ninety nine percent, I never said make them happy.
Kind of echo that too. I think there's there's going to be so many great ideas deciding what the best great ideas are. And trying to figure that, how that fits into the budget and making, to try to make the most of what we have. It's actually the hardest part of the master plan process.
Then the other question was.
What is challenging?
Sometimes challenges are creating those solutions, you know, sometimes. A lot of you have got different ideas about how things should work and how things should go forward. So directing that is sometimes a challenge.
Sure. How about specific to our our sort of buildings or kind of our needs, I guess I shouldn't say, with the needs that you see in the district? What would be the the greatest challenge that you see?
I was just going to say, you know, in looking at the the assessment report, you know, there's the answer is probably not, everything's great here. So we're just going to add this piece, this new piece. It's, we're kind of having to touch a lot of little things throughout. You know, there's some of the building security and some of the other you know, pieces and parts, the windows that need to be updated or the doors or things like that. And so then you start to get a little thin but broad. And that could be a challenge compared to one cohesive piece you're adding on, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, to kind of echo what you're saying. Sometimes if you spread dollars throughout a bigger piece, it makes it look like you're not doing as much. You know, it's it's harder to make a big path if it's over spread over a bigger area. So understanding that budgets are tight and trying to make the most of what you have will also make you impact on the district. Your challenge that I thought if you guys are kind of a couple of steps ahead here is doing an assessment, understand you know, sometimes we come to situations where there hasn't really been any thought. It's just, hey, we know we got to do something. And then a team would come in, be like, hey, you've got laundry list of stuff that it's immediate emergency that you've got to fix. Go things that don't have any air conditioning period or I I'm thinking from the M P side because that's usually what we get involved with. And those are some of the things that we got to correct it from day one. Take it out of the money you've got available and you're left over with this. And it was really more of a deferred maintenance sort of item. You know, looking through the report that our team put together, there's, there is something hanging through here, but there there didn't seem like there was anything that was like, hey, this is you know, a huge dollar item that would you know, not have a big impact immediately addressed it.
So you guys are, you're a bigger firm. It sounded like you were saying you haven't just worked with schools. You've worked in a lot of different environments. So could you talk a little bit about sort of what are the strengths and weaknesses of your firm having that kind of more broad experience rather than being more focused on schools and their particular needs?
I personally, I think, we will probably get a couple of good answers here, but the person I think having that diversity helps you understand different benefits and different benefits. You don't get caught in a kind of a narrow tunnel. I'm always working on this. This is the way the trend works. This is how it's always worked, right? It allows us to kind of think out broader because we've worked on different projects with different needs. So we can pull things from experience from other sides of that that would help us, I think, with some of those decisions. And the other thing is, you know, with a being a larger firm, we have, you know, twelve grades staff in the office, right? We're all really architecture, we have one engineer. But we have twenty five other offices across the nation and they have there's so much experience with schools and the diversity I talked about. So they are, we can reach out for them. That expert, it's a school expert, if another other office or some experts somewhere else can also chime in with us. And we can have conversations about what's happened in the different parts of the country and what best solutions might be. Nationwide. I think that's a benefit.
Yeah, I would agree. Just the the diversity of, you know, doing something, doing schools in Iowa may look different than doing schools in Illinois. And we do have meetings with all those that do K twelve in our in our firm. And nobody does exclusively one sector, you know, even though I focus on K twelve, I do other municipal. And I've noticed a lot of overlap with municipal, you know, again, your taxpayer dollars, you're answering to the public, you're giving presentations, you're concerned about durability and longevity and some of those things. And so like Bob was saying, some of the materials that we use or some of the just decisions that are made kind of overlap. And I would have learned that from the municipal side, but then I can carry it to the the K twelve side. And the same with having other K twelve in other states, you can see trends that are coming or things that are have worked well here or there. So I think it just having that variety of people speaking into it, you're going to get our local presence being here for the people that you're interacting with and boots on the ground. But we also have this network to tap into if we come across a question that we're not sure on or just even running by, design is collaborative. My idea, one person's idea is never going to be the best idea. It's always going to be better to run it by a group and kind of get consensus. Which we want to do with you on master planning, but even within design, we do that. And so having other people to to weigh in, I think, helps the process and ends up better than if we had just done it ourselves in our in our silo.
We have a K through twelve studio too, that's across all twenty five offices in your industry, K through twelve, we work through K through twelve projects. We meet every couple of months and we discuss what the new trends are. We talk about projects we've worked on, we showcase the projects we've worked on. So people can really get it, you know, they're proud of what they do, right? So we want to see what's been accomplished. And so that's another plus, I think, that we have. And Sarah's a big part of that. So she's head K twelve studio and we're trying to make that successful.
You've been part of that group?
Yes.
So what are some of the trends that they're talking about now?
Our last meeting was actually, we had our our landscape division come in and they were talking about different kinds of fields and turf and track and things like that, which is not something that is every school's you know, need. But when you do come across it, it's nice to say, we can do a track, we can do a field, we know about these things, you know. So that was our most recent, we've had one on school security. Just the various trends, different ideas, what's working, what different districts around the country, because that can be certainly shared knowledge will be better in that situation. So kind of quarterly, we pick a topic or we showcase a couple of projects. You know, I've done a feature where I showed some of the the Iowa City School work that we've done. They're had a focus on bathrooms and having more open bathrooms, not so that, you know, they have a teacher, a single teacher being in a bathroom and that can provide those problems. And so they wanted to have a more open facility. So they had Florida ceiling stalls and they're trying that out. You know, I mean, it was just working through some of those those things to, this is an issue. How do we deal with it and opening it up? And so that's an example of some of the the things that we discussed in our K twelve studio recently.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm sure it's Snyder, you guys all lean back in.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Now we're good.
What do you need? You played it to me like I did something wrong.
No, we need two minutes.
Okay, please, get two minutes. Is that all right, Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, it works well.
I don't, I don't know how much to discuss.
Yes.
And you know, Dr. Johnson or Reese, I don't know how much to discuss. He just wanted it over, he wanted to stay around. Want us to come to a decision tonight?
Are the bank kids still here?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just.
Right. Yeah.
We have, we're not building a building, you know, which is very